Good morning. I now call the November 7th, 2019 work session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 AM. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this board meeting.
As defined in Florida sunshine law, the board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the sunshine law, the board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the school board secretary. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the chair will call for public comments. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the sunshine law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these rules.
Thank you. We will now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing.
There are three points that are time sensitive that we need to share with you. So Ms. Beck, if you will start, please.
All right. Good morning, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, Ms. Prestapino and Mr. Gibbs. I will be very brief, but I wanted to come before you today to provide you with some updates. When I was up here last, Mr. McAtier and I, we were presenting our draft copy of the student progression plan. From that conversation, there were several things that I was asked to really go back and work on, and we are pleased to say that we have been very successful in those conversations. One of the things that we tackled first was the conversation of early grade retention slash promotion. That was really the first thing that we wanted to go in for. What that looked like was every year, we have curriculum liaisons. We have them for grades three, five, and we have them for grades K-2. So we knew that our K-2 group was really the group we wanted to tap into. We have representatives from each and every one of our elementary schools. We have had a series of meetings, and first, I'd like to thank Mrs. Stacy has been at all of our meetings. Ms. Thrower has been at many of our meetings, and I appreciate their support at those meetings, as well as Dr. Mayor. I appreciate your attendance as well. One of the things that as the group, just to make sure that we were all kind of talking about the same thing, we really discussed the pros and cons of early grade retention, making sure that we were clarifying any misconceptions. We were all on the same page. Then what we did was we put a document before our group of teachers. We also had three administrators that participated as well, and talked about a document that's been in our district for a very long time, but it only had some minor updates along the way. We really worked collaboratively together over a series of meetings, certainly with teacher input, to make corrections, additions, deletions. Just we refreshed the entire document. It is no longer a checklist, whereas it is a data collection form that really allows us to see everything that's going on with that child. The next thing we tackled as a group was the new language. I can't even say it was revised, because as Mrs. Stacy pointed out, there really wasn't too much at all. So really, it was the addition of new language that would speak to retention in early grades. We worked for at least one meeting on that. When we would conclude each meeting, we would ask them to take it back to their teacher colleagues at their school, because again, they had a representative from every school. So when they were coming back, they were coming back and speaking on behalf of their colleagues. It concluded with, on October 30th, we sent out our kind of final corrections of our new updated draft for our data collection sheet and our proposed language for the student progression plan. We asked our teachers to vote by consensus. We had 37 members of a part of our group, and we had 100% in agreement to all of the updates and changes. So that is consensus in my book. Here's what I'd like to say before I turn this piece over to Ms. Lucas, my K-2 coordinator, who'd like to talk just a little bit about the student, the additions to the student progression plan. I'll tell you, coming into this, I didn't even, I knew some of our teachers, didn't know all of them. I certainly didn't know who was going to be selected from each school. But here's what I can say: great group of individuals. Just felt like we worked really well together. I think the key here was that all voices were heard. One of our mantras, and they really stuck to it, is that we are additive and not repetitive. So once we've said it and we've discussed it, then we've discussed it, and we've got to move on to something else. And that really kept our conversations moving along, and we talked about a lot of stuff. We've also talked about a communication plan that, once you have approved the student progression plan, then we are rolling this full out to administrators, and they will have some work in front of them in January. That was the agreement that we made. We want to ensure that all teachers are aware of our new process beginning in January. So if there is a student or two that they have concerns about, they have ample time to look at what they will need to collect or do, if they want to come to the table, and definitely recommend retention for their student. I'm going to toss it over to Ms. Lucas just for a minute, and she'll update you on the highlights to the student progression plan.
Good morning. So student progression plan updated language, which I believe Ms. Beck will hand you right now. This is a combination of a couple of pieces. First and foremost, I took a look at neighboring districts, looked at Citrus County, looked at Orange County, and looked at the current practices taking place in the current language housed in those district plans. And so part of that fed into the research that went into this new language. But also, the data collection sheet that was put together by our teacher group that Ms. Beck mentioned, that also is reflected in this language as well. So you'll, just some quick highlights, you'll find in that first section that this is a teacher-initiated process. So if a teacher has a concern, they can utilize the accompanying form to reflect those concerns through data and through a narrative if they like. Parents can also provide a narrative to add to their thoughts on their child and their progress in the current grade level. And then there's language at the end for next steps. What happens if the child is retained? What happens on our end in the schools? What do we need to do now, including targeting the deficit, helping to remediate with that child? So those are some quick highlights. And so this language will be added to the updated draft of the SPP.
And it is currently added to what you have in draft form on, for our next board meeting here in November. Finally, I'd like to give you an update. I know Mrs. Kelly spoke about the special area current grading scales, with M representing that we are meeting expectations and P that our students are progressing towards expectation in our special area courses. So we have not, in the past, had a special area liaison group, but we did this year, and I have really enjoyed these meetings as well. So we have had a media, a librarian liaison group. We've had an art and music liaison group, and we've had a PE liaison group. All of those meetings took place in the month of October. We have talked about a variety of topics. Some of it is related to the work that we're doing in the next quarter. So we've done some of that. But certainly, in our PE, art and music, we have talked about our current grading scale in special area. We have come to a consensus through that group, and this was advertised, and any special area teacher could participate in that. We have agreed through consensus that we are going to hold on the M and the P this year. We'd like to move, we're going to stay where we are with that. With the agreement that we would like to come back to the table as a group during November, December, we are setting a date. I'm working with Ms. Crowder, and I'm also working with Ms. Polk, who supports our FANS, schools in the area of physical education. And we're going to combine groups, and we're going to be talking about any updates that we would like to make for special areas for the next school year. With my commitment that we are going to have this solidified by the end of the school year, when teachers leave, they're going to know what the updates are. We're going to communicate that to our families, so that when we kick off for the 2020, 2021 school year, that we know where we are headed connected to special areas. We've also got a couple other things on the docket that we want to talk about, and we just really had some good open dialogue. Mrs. Thrower participated in a couple of those, and again, great group of individuals that came to the table and really want to talk through things and really want to help make a difference. And I felt like all meetings were very productive. So I turn it over to you to see if you have any questions and anything I can answer for you.
Do you have any questions?
Well, just now, I'm reading it. So the final complete version. And I do see some things.
Stacy, this was sent to us through email.
You know what? I couldn't get my district email. There was a couple of days I couldn't get it, and so that's my fault. I'm going to go through this, and if there's any minor issues, I can always talk about it Tuesday night. And so I will, and the one concern was what we talked about, the, when we were talking about the committee moving forward with the recommendation, and that the principal would be given the committee recommendation, I wanted to add that, and the teacher's recommendation, what it was when it came to the committee. Because it comes to the committee with a teacher recommendation, and then the committee goes from there. And I think the principal should definitely know, when it comes to him, what the teacher's recommendation was.
Absolutely, and that is clearly a part of that data collection piece, as well as acknowledging if the parent has a strong feeling one way or the other. We have added a section on that kind of collection form that-
I saw that. I know we have that.
That the teacher can include that as a part of the discussion. The one thing I would like to point out, and I say this ever so respectfully, is I want to be very careful, because these were 37 folks that have really entrusted what we have said to them, and I have really talked to them about that you are involved in this process and you have a say in this process. So they have-
That's real clear on the sheet, because our final, I think you did an absolute phenomenal job. Thank you. First of all, I am not critiquing anything you did. I'm just adding some, crossing some Ts that I heard the teacher say myself, because I was there. The teacher recommendation is very important to them. I heard it with my own ears. I even heard one teacher, when you asked for, "Give me the pros and cons of retention," and they said, "Well, I really can't think of any cons." You know, a couple of teachers. So I loved the way you presented it. I can't say that I could think of any way you could have done it better, okay? But what I'm saying is, I just want to make sure that in our final document, when the committee takes what the teacher gives them, makes their recommendation, and then goes to the principal, that it is clear that the principal has the document that shows the teacher's recommendation.
And that absolutely is going there, and I think part of that, Mrs. Stacy-
I want to make sure that piece goes to-
Comes in our communication with administrators in January. I think some of those things, that's where that really comes into play. Also, keep in mind that because we have a representative from each and every school, really, one of our parting messages to them until we meet with them again, because we're not done-
I think your school, I heard you.
Absolutely, is that you are the advocate at your school, and you have been a part of all of these meetings, and so you need to make sure that it is rolling out just as the way in which we intended when we spoke whole group. And we will be meeting with this group again, because we have other things to chat with them about, and to really, that connect to curriculum-based things. So this is our group that's been established for the year, and whenever we have K-2 things, this is the group we call in.
Okay, and I would like, I would like to say one more thing. Your number F that you, is actually all I really wanted. All the extra is bonus. I wanted clarity on exactly what assessment tools would run this. And this is perfection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to make the recommendation, if that was in the teacher discussion, if maybe we can go ahead and amend that to be on here, because we know if it's not on here, then-
Honestly-
Are you okay with it not?
If she, if she's telling me that that, I saw the form, and I know what's supposed to be on that form, and the teacher has comments that she makes. I want to make sure that that form is included with the committee's recommendation back to the principal.
Absolutely. And pointing out a couple of places on the student progression plan. So number one, in that first part where it says number one, we were clear to add that the teacher initiates, which was not included in there initially. And then referring back to that F, multiple sources of academic data, we did that final mark there does indicate teacher input as well. And so we felt-
As long as that form is part of it, because that form was so classy that y'all put together. And as long as, I think it's very important that, and I'd like to be there when you talk to the communication with the principals. I want to go to that meeting. I want to be invited to that one.
Okay, absolutely.
That, if that piece is connected to your recommendation, I am 100% with you on this, okay?
Perfect.
All right.
And we'll be sure, we'll invite all of you to that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I have one thing. On two, concerning the parents notification, I'm just, I just want to make sure that in the parent notification, that they're being notified early throughout this process, not waiting till, I mean, we're going to, you can see if this kid is having showing signs of not being able to make the grade before the first semester is out. We need to start having those conversations. So we're going to get to the end of the year, and then we're getting all these phone calls from parents concerning that.
Absolutely.
And then have some type of notation where we've had that conversation with the parent.
Absolutely. So Reverend Cummings, so we actually already have an established form. We have had it. It is a possible retention form, and typically, those are on NCR copies. So a copy is sent home to the parent, a copy is maintained at the school, and then having been that assistant principal that was following up on those, I usually kept a copy on my desk, so if I didn't get it back, oop, I was making another copy and kind of nicely writing second, second copy or whatever I was writing, so.
How hard do we start sending those out?
So for sure, though, so we always would send those with a report card, again, because report cards are usually sent in some type of an envelope. So in our mind, it indicates something of importance is coming home. So some years, we have sent those home with third nine weeks report cards. Sometimes, we've sent those home with second nine weeks report card. We just want to be, one of the things we did talk to the teacher group on is, we just want to make sure that we're giving our students adequate opportunity to gain the skills and the standards they need to be successful. I mean, I've, we said to them, you know, if we're calling the ball in September, we want to make sure that we're not giving up on the student and saying, "Ah, they're not going to make it here in Kinnear. We've got a long way to go, and we've got a lot that we can accomplish with them." But on the flip side, I get what you're saying. We want to make sure that we have provided adequate notifications. So again, those letters don't have to be created, so really, we could send those home with second or third nine weeks report card, because it's not anything we have to create. We've got them.
Is a parent-teacher conference requested when those notifications go out?
So absolutely. I can tell you 100% what I will say to administrators, and then as a, as a former principal myself, I would stand in front of my group and say, "This would have gone for K-3, 4, or 5." What I said, would have said is, this letter is not the first communication that there is a concern in the classroom. This is literally a follow-up to all the other ways that you have communicated. We don't want a letter to be the-
Right.
The shocking thing. So I mean, you wouldn't want that. I wouldn't want that as a parent.
One more thing, and this is something that you can do for me between now and the board meeting, because this would be my only amendment, that I don't know really where it would fit nicely in here. And it's either in Citrus County or St. John's. It's one of the counties that we were pulling up looking at. That the committee's opinion for retention or, or not, based upon the evidence, this is what we want to do. I want to say the preponderance of the evidence. It's a special word that they, that this district uses that means a lot. Because when you say the preponderance of the evidence, you are saying a stronger word. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Not just, based upon this information, we've, preponderance of the data and information, or preponderance of the evidence on this situation. This is what we want. Because to me, that is a very, do you all understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Just to say, it's just our-
It's overwhelming data.
It's the same thing. The preponderance of the data, not so that if a principal says, "Well, okay, they're saying the evidence says this," then he goes, "I have to say it's the preponderance of the evidence. Let me look a little closer." You follow me?
Okay.
And so I like that word. If you'll put that in there for me, I'll be so happy.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Kindred and Ms. Rora are going to come on up to the podium, and as they come up, I want you to keep in mind a quote from Ronald Reagan, who said, "The answers are simple, not easy." That things are often that way. So we have a simple request from Principal Bayless at Oak Crest, and actually, well, it may look like it wasn't easy to do. Ms. Rora made it easy to do. So they're going to, they have a request for you that we need you to consider.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Good morning, Chairwoman King, Vice Chair Reverend Cummings, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, and Ms. Prestapino. I come to you today to ask for your support in a proposed change to Oak Crest Elementary's Student Day. The Student Day is being proposed to be adjusted by 10 minutes, making the school hours 7:45 to 2:55, instead of the current 7:35 to 2:45. Currently, there are 460 out of 500 students who have accrued three or more tardies this school year alone. The average amount of tardies for a student at Oak Crest Elementary is five to seven-star tardies as of yesterday at this point in the school year. The majority of these tardies are within the first 10 minutes of their school day. We have an attendance response committee for Oak Crest that Ms. Thrower serves on, and Reverend Cummings has been to several of the meetings, for Oak Crest that monitors attendance data and monitors what can be implemented to assist students in being at school on time each and every day. The need for a slightly later start time came out of these committee meetings, as we drilled down to each student to determine what the cause of these tardies were. Two parent surveys have been sent home discussing the proposed later start time. One was at an evening event, and one was sent home schoolwide. The proposed change to Oak Crest Student Day would be put on board docs at a later board meeting for your consideration. I would like to ask for a consensus today to move forward with being able to notify the families of Oak Crest, with the intended start date being January 7th after winter break. Thank you.
Very concise.
Yeah. I mean, and the fact that you've surveyed your parents, and you've looked at the data, and it shows that it's within that 10-minute time period. If Ms. Rora has solved the transportation problem, why would we not let them do this?
Right.
And one of the big issues, looking at the data, was we have multiple children in one family, so the parents are rushing to try to get, drop kid one, kid two, kid three. And, and giving them a little bit of breathing space will make a huge difference. And also, and the kids, too, because these kids are just rushing in every single morning, grabbing their breakfast, running to class. You know, it's, it really was an amazing collaboration, because at first, I thought, well, you know, are we rewarding these kids by just making the start time a little later, so to speak? Well, that really wasn't the issue. These kids can't get to school unless their parents are able to get them there, and they're trying to get multiple children to school and then also get to work.
Ms. Stacy?
My only thought is, as long as you don't adjust the drop-off time, because parents are, the drop-off time, so the parents aren't affected by-
So this is really a win-win. We're actually trying, if they drop them off at the same time they're dropping them off now, which is 7:10, they can drop them off as early as 7:10, which we're hopeful that they'll do, then we are actually gaining 10 minutes with them.
Okay.
And that's really what we want to do. And I've also talked to Mr. Carlisle, who's the principal at Vanguard High School. Their dismissal is within five minutes of that timeframe. It was within 10 minutes before. He said that later timeframe from Vanguard will actually help them in the afternoons, because they'll be able to get their high schoolers where they need to be a little quicker before the elementary students come out.
Sounds good.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a consensus.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then final updates from Mr. Hurley.
Good morning, Chair King, Board Members.
Good morning.
Dr. Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, Ms. Prestapino. The item I have for you this morning is a request from the City of Ocala Electric Utility, or the city. It's in regard to Booster Stadium, and the request is for a 20-foot wide piece of right, of a 20-foot wide easement. And I see that Ms. McCall has picked up her flyer there, so I should call your attention to that. You have a single sheet, two sides on it, the side of the graphic on it, identified it as Exhibit A at the top. That shows you what they're requesting. It occurs at the front edge of the property there. The city is apparently in, working on a road project. They've apparently encountered a case where they need to move poles back, but there are other utilities in the ground. So they need additional room to work. So that, that's the request. On the other side of that single sheet is the project overall. And if you've traveled northeast 36th Avenue, you notice that that's all being widened. That's part of a bridge flyover. There's 25th Avenue and 36th Avenue. So it's a federal, federal dollars, state dollars, and local dollars going into those projects. My request, or the direction I'm seeking this morning, is a consensus vote on your part to proceed with this, because the city is requesting that it be expedited. We wouldn't, the board would need to either do an easement as they're requesting, or possibly a quitclaim deed. Those are details that we could work out, and, you know, if you would permit me, authorize me to go and do that, I'll work with staff at the city and see which of those works best. I have mentioned that to their engineer, and I haven't heard anything back from them, so they're just interested to be able to get underway with the project and keep on their timetable. I have some other specifics that I could let you know about that, you know, what's going on with the details of the project. But in short, their request is initially for an easement. I think that in order for them to proceed, we could, staff could accept this graphic as a, an improvement plan, and then work out the details with them. I think there should be no cost to the school board for this, and so what I'd work on and have proposed to the engineer is that they do, the city has its own survey department, so they would do the survey and write the legal description for whether it's an easement or it's a quitclaim. And then, when those documents are done, having been prepared at no cost to the school board, come back to the earliest possible board meeting for you to consider that approval of it, or whatever kind of action is necessary.
Honestly, I would prefer an easement for lots of reasons. We don't, you know, as far as parking at ballgames that's held over there, we don't know. Because once it's quitclaimed, then they can actually fence it off, and they could claim it, and that sort of thing. Where in easement, we could still actually use the property if we need to, for parking and issues like that. So I definitely prefer that.
And those are good considerations, and also, I don't know if at any point in the future, we would fence it, but that was one of my first thoughts. So in a like sense, you know, their, their access would just require, they would need to have-
They just need to have utility access.
Right. But I mean, their access, if we were to fence the entirety of that property, I don't know if or why we would, but then they would need to have, be able to-
They would still have a gate in and out.
So one of my questions would be, doesn't look like we lose a whole lot, but coming off of northeast 36th Avenue, you know how the traffic backs up on ballgame nights? So would there be turn lanes getting, would they change the configuration of 36th to make it easier to get in and out of Booster Stadium?
There is a design, and this has been processed now for five-plus years. And so there's a four-lane divided median with turn lanes, and the, we're not going to have the same number of access points that we do now, but it has all been worked out with consideration to there being ballgames there and- there and, and traffic circulation.
Good. I'm fine.
Easements.
Yeah.
So you have a consensus with an easement.
Thank you very much.
That was easy. That was easy for the easement.
I don't like to give anything away. I'll let you use it, but I don't want to give it to you.
Those are my updates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move on with our emergency management with Duke Energy updates. Is that, Mr. Lepper, are you?
Well, I will introduce Duke Energy.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, board members, Mr. Gibbs, Superintendent Mayor, and Ms. Prestapino. In 2017, Marion County was caught in the path of Hurricane Irma. At that time, we had two designated shelters that supported individuals with special needs, Westport and Bellevue High School. Unfortunately, at that time, the backup power at Bellevue High School failed to operate and left the school in a really difficult situation. Since that time, county emergency management, in partnership with Marion County Public Schools, have increased the special needs capacity at Westport High School, and also identified additional space to be able to use at Forest High School. Duke Energy is the power provider at Forest High School, and is represented today by Mr. Rick Gardner. Mr. Gardner would like to present some backup power options at Forest High School for your consideration. Rick?
Here is the magic one. Where do you point it out?
Over there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. I'll just do a brief introduction on myself. I work for Duke Energy. Duke Energy has two arms. We have a regulated and a non-regulated arm. I represent the non-regulated piece of Duke Energy. And what we do is we do customer solutions. So we're doing backup generation, UPS systems, infrastructure support, infrastructure support, and so on. So that's a little background on the, the side of Duke that I work for. Oh, sorry. I was used to standing off to the side. Okay, so Phillip, he, he kind of did a brief introduction on, on what the, what the background is, on, on why we were requested to come on here and make a, a recommendation. Apparently, your backup system previous at Bellevue did have a failure. And then they started looking at all the variables at play in, road access, close proximity to emergency backup, excuse me, emergency facilities, and so on. So it was determined that Forest High School was probably the best option. And this started with Duke and Marion County and the school board back in about 2018, if I recall. So there were some preliminary numbers that were floated out. And since then, we, we've taken another hard look at it. I do know that there's going to be some, some additional things going on at the Forest High School that may change the load profiles. But we'll look at that when we get further downstream. I, I did this for kind of a visual overview of the comparison of the two. When you look at Bellevue, you'll see the single, the single road accesses, the vegetation is a little, a little more thicker. There's no emergency centers in the close proximity compared to the Forest High School, which has all the, all the other needs that we need. The highway access, there's a, there's a medical facility down the road from the school. There's not a lot of vegetation that's going to block our access in or out of the area for either egress of the, of the, of the people, or, or to bring in trucks to fuel the, the generator systems. We targeted a large gym and a cafeteria that can support 600 individuals with no problem. And there's a good location right outside the, the gym and the cafeteria area. So the proposal that we've looked at is, these are, these are very, they're, they're high-level, but they're pretty close based on some, some projects that we've done. We've, we do these backup projects all over the country. And we've got a, a central NOC system, a, a network operating system that we, we monitor all these systems on. So this is going to be somewhat of a high level, just for discussions and, and getting a green light for approval. Duke Energy has programs that we own, operate, maintain the generation system. So essentially, what you're getting is a secondary feed, if you will. If you lose your grid, generator kicks on within 10 seconds, and you've backed up whatever location you need done. In this case, it would be the cafeteria and the gymnasium. So you'd have all, all the, all the amenities of those two facilities, air conditioning, refrigeration, lighting, so on and so forth. It'd be full backup. All the permitting, construction, the tank required, the tank permitting, the EPA filings and everything is Duke's responsibility. This is, the school system would basically be hands-off on this other than to approve the project. The system that we budgeted for is a two-and-a-half-megawatt unit. It will, it is, it is typically margin, we margin the systems about 25% over what your load demands are. So there's plenty of room for expansion there. You're currently on an interruptible rate, which you're getting credits for. This is a discussion for the regulated side. Mike Mangan would, would have this dialogue with you. So what, what this generator would do is get you essentially in compliance to maintain that going forward. And I'm not saying it's being taken away. I'm just saying that this would now get you in compliance of that. Because right now, you're, you're, you're not in compliance. The system will be tied in on the Duke side of the meter. So we're, we're going in on the primary side, which is the less disruptive location for us to tie into, to intercept the feed. If we do it on the secondary side, it becomes more cabling, more trenching, more, more connection points, probably a few more transformers and things like that. So when I say it's less disruptive, that's the easiest place we can, we can do the tie-in. Commissioning typically takes about seven to 10 months, depending on, on, you know, where we place it and how quick we can get things on order. We just finished one for the city of Tarpon Springs, and I think we did it in five-and-a-half, six months. Not as big a unit as this, but just giving you a point of example. The monthly fee for this is estimated at about $34,000 a month. When we give budgetaries, there, there's some, there's some fudge in there. So until we get in there, do an engineering design, and, and start putting the pieces of the puzzle together, that, that's kind of a good high-level number, if you will. And if you've got questions while I'm talking, I, I have no problem with interrupting, but I'll, I'll save time at the end for questions. I'm not going to read this, because you, you have the presentation in front of you. This is essentially the benefits of using a service, a Duke offered service, compared to either doing a turnkey or a turnkey with maintenance. When I talk about the $34,000, somebody's going to ask me, well, what does it cost to do a turnkey? For the same Tier Four unit, and Tier Four unit, for, for those that are not familiar with what does Tier Four mean in the generator world? It means it's EPA compliant. You can, it's, it's not a emergency generator, which is a Tier Two generator. You're, you're restricted to running it to 100 hours or less. A Tier Four, you could run as long as you want, and it meets all the EPA clean air requirements. So in order to do a turnkey, you're probably looking at about $2.5 million and about $50,000 a year in maintenance and, and routine and fuels and things like that. So-
What was the number again?
About two-and-a-half.
A year?
Oh, excuse me, for what? Fifty, I think it was 52,000 is what I came up with estimates for maintenance.
52,000 a year.
What, are you asking me about the maintenance, if you do a turnkey? Or are you asking me about the fee to have the generator in place?
Kind of probably all of it.
Yeah.
Okay. $34,000 is the estimate for the Tier Four generator a month. In order to, if you decided to go with a turnkey, you would have a capital outlay of two-and-a-half million, and it'd be about $50,000 a year for maintenance, fuel, things like that.
A year or a month?
A year.
So we still had the $34,000 a month?
No. If you had the turnkey-
Then we would only have the 50,000, the 34,000 would-
Right. The 34,000 a month, you have no capital outlay. You have no maintenance requirements. If that unit breaks down, it's on Duke. We pay for it. Yeah, it, it's just essentially another service, another, another way to feed electricity in without you putting any capital outlay. And then, of course, you've got the maintenance requirements of maintaining it. I can tell you this, we take care of these generators better than I take care of my car. So, so moving on to what are the next steps? One of the things that we would ask to do is we do what we call an ESA or an Engineering Service Agreement. That agreement would be about $20,000 to $25,000. We'd come in, we'd do a single-line diagram, we would do a site plan, and we would not invoice that if we moved forward with the project. If we moved, if we didn't move forward with the project, we would give you the deliverable, and then you'd be invoiced for that work. And then you could take and shop it anywhere you wanted. We, we need to perform a load analysis. There was discussion at a previous meeting where chillers were being changed out and upgraded and so on. We don't know how that's going to impact the load. It may actually reduce the load. So the, the price would be lower. So the next step to bringing in a design engineer to do all this preliminary design work, commissioning, like I said, takes seven to 10 months. And the service fees do not start until after the commissioning. Questions?
I have two. The first one is, we want to be completely safe and ready by next hurricane season.
You're inside the window right now. I mean, seven to 10 months. Equipment typically takes five or six months. We, we could do several things in parallel, but it would, it would, we would all have to work fast together. And I'm, in order for Duke just to put a proposal in front of you that you could sign, assuming that you moved in that direction, you're probably looking at early December. Because I have to, we have to do the design work. I have to get the project approved, go through the contracting and proposals and all that stuff, and then present it to you. And then, then the ball starts rolling. And then we, we'd have a lot of paralleling events, pulling permits, ordering equipment, and so on.
So the total cost of this is about $4 million over 10 years?
Yes, sir.
A little over $4 million over 10?
Yep.
On that premier one?
Pardon me?
That's on the premier generator? That's on the?
The, the Tier Four, yes.
Tier Four.
Yeah.
How much is the, what's the cost of the generator?
I, I don't have that breakdown, sir.
So how does the $50,000 affect the $4 million?
It doesn't. Okay, let, let's walk through this one more time, just to make sure that we-
That's okay. If everybody else understands, because you lost me. So that's okay.
Well, it only takes a second to explain it.
I called the $24,000 a month. I couldn't hear the $50,000 conversation.
Okay. So the $50,000 came up if you decided to purchase your generator. You, you would have a, about a $2.5 million outlay. And that, that's the answer to your question.
Okay, that's, okay.
So the generator, if we bought the generator for $2.5 million, then we would be paying 50, $50,000 a year- A year.
For maintenance, fuels, what have you.
To you.
Not to me, no.
Whomever.
To who?
To whomever. Because when you go to a turnkey, and we can supply a turnkey also, and we can build in maintenance contracts with that, too. But when we previously had some of this dialogue, that came up in discussion. And we, we, we put it in writing and floated it out. I don't remember who all got the correspondence, but-
So I want to ask, Mr. Lepper, what were we paying CECO monthly at Bellevue High School?
That would be a question for Ms. Boston Ellis.
Ms. Boston Ellis, do you remember? I just want to see what the comparable is. And was it the same quality of generator? I mean, this generator, I'm assuming, because it's a special needs shelter, would provide air conditioning in those buildings?
Everything in that building would be, it would be just like the power's on all the time.
Within 10 entire building, too.
Well-
Or certain-
It's been designated the cafeteria and gym.
Thanks, Robert.
I'm Teresa. Good morning. I do have that information on CECO. I can't speak to the generator, but I know we were paying $10,000 a month for Bellevue High and Middle. So I can't speak to the space of it or what it covered.
Or the size?
Correct.
Yes, it's good, because it could be, it could be, we're not comparing apples to apples here either.
Yeah, I can speak to somewhat. The, all the stuff that happened at Bellevue High School was before my time even. But because we know our schools, we know something about. It was a 1.8-megawatt generator at Bellevue High and Bellevue Middle. And it was 20 years old when it went down. So, you know, as far as the quality, can't tell you much about the quality, but it was at the end of its lifespan. And it was, like I said, it was about 1.8. It's smaller, what's being proposed here. Bellevue High and Middle together is bigger than Forest High School, but the high school at Bellevue High is smaller. And I think it's because at the time, you know, there's, there's two schools that thought on generation, you, you run what you want to run, or you run everything. But if you get a generator size to run only what you want to run, and then you want to run everything, it's usually too small. And if you overrun the generator, eventually it taxes that generator and just shortens the lifespan, just like putting 50,000 miles on your car a year, and you're going to last 20 years like somebody who only puts 5,000 miles on their car. And Bellevue High's ran quite a bit, because it was being used as power, not just emergency power, but power. And this, no doubt, that would be factored into the design of this, is, is it only going to run when needed? Or is it going to run maybe when not needed? There, there may be some rebate deal that, that had happened in the past that may play into this or not. But I believe what Duke is presenting is, if you run everything, this is the size you need. And then it's a matter of how much are you going to run it? Just during emergency, or maybe on a broad, bright day, to take us off power grid? And that would really be up to Duke to explain those pieces.
Was CECO only charging us $10,000 a month because of their ability to use the generator for other things?
That was part of the deal, based on the agreement that was signed originally in 1998, yes.
They said the energy wasn't really used that many hours.
Right.
They clarified that. It wasn't used that much at all.
Right, right. Well, and why I'm asking is because would Duke be able to offer something similar to help lower the price?
Well, you're currently on an interruptible rate.
Yeah.
And like I stated before, that requirement, it, based on our rules, and this goes back 10 or 15 years, where you were grandfathered in on an interruptible rate. So I can't speak, so I can't speak to how that happened, but you're currently not in compliance. I, I won't say that they'll take it away, but I know it's about $8,000 a month, if I'm correct. I, I'm working from memory here. I have to look at my notes.
Is there a benefit to it?
Pardon me?
That's what we're currently paying.
Is that what you're saying?
No, you're currently getting $8,000 in credits on, on what's called an interruptible rate, which, which means if, if, if we had a, a substation failure and we needed to shed load, we would go to all our interruptible customers and say, we're going to take you off the grid, but we know you have a generator, and we, we cut you off. But in your case, you're on an interruptible rate. You don't have a generator. So-
But we're not in compliance.
That, that's true. But again, I will, I will restate that this is a regulated discussion with your account manager. I'm on the non-reg side. All I, all I do is I use this information to help calculate cost offsets with your interruptibles, so.
And that's the way CECO had us also. They had us on some type of interruptible rate.
So I think the next discussion, and I agree with Nancy. I mean, we don't have time to waste, but we really need to see what can we do about getting maybe this $34,000 down a bit? And I guess that's a conversation with Mike Mangan?
No. It's a discussion with my group. Because we're on the non-regulated side. Cause we're on the non-regulated side. Mike doesn't really have a lot to do with it. And as I stated earlier, um, this is a budgetary high level, so it's probably got some margin in there that once we do the design work, uh, it can be whittled down.
Let me ask you one question.
Sure.
If we go with the purchase of the generator and just pay the $50,000 a year, will we still keep our interruptible rate?
Sure.
Our $8,000 savings?
Sure.
And that would be about-
That would pay for our $50,000?
Right, and that would be 2.5 million for the generator, correct? As well as about $600,000 over 10 years.
But we wouldn't have to pay the 32,000 a month though.
Right.
We would only, we-
We're going to pay for maintenance.
Only 50,000 a year.
The, the, the 32 to 34,000 a month pays for everything. All, everything from, you know, from, from design to installation to maintenance to warranty.
And it's up to 10 years. It goes for 10 years.
It's for 10 years.
And then it stops.
Well, then you can decide what you'd like to do. There are options.
If our generator's still working, then we don't have to go back to, we don't have to go back to the 30 something thousand a month. Because if our generator's still working, couldn't, then we then go to the $50,000 deal.
Well, it, it depends on how you, you want to approach it. It, at the end of the 10-year terms, it's renegotiated by then, our, our sunk costs or our, our capital investment has already been recovered, so.
Is it our generator in 10 years?
Uh, no.
If we paid for it for 10?
It is not. Uh, the, the reason that it is-
Never our generator.
Pardon me?
It's never our generator.
It, it can be, but it, it, in this program, it is not because it's on the Duke side, so it's inside the Duke grid. It's just like the transformers that are on your property, the poles that are on your property. Those are Duke-owned.
So let's go back, let's go back to the 2.5 million dollar generator. What, what would it do? Would it do the same thing as the-
It'd do exactly the same thing. It depends on if you want to spend the capital and, and maintain it and so on.
Where are we going to get the 2.5 million to get this done before hurricane season?
And that's what we need to decide.
I mean, I, I think that we, we are not prepared for hurricane season. Where is the 2.5 million in the budget?
Let's ask Teresa, which one would be better?
More feasible.
I think that's, that's a discussion.
I'm sorry, Ms. Boston Ellis.
I hate to put you in this spot, but we need to figure out.
But what do you think?
Do you want to?
The only thing we need to weigh here is that if you look at the list of, of services that come with the premier power, we want to make sure that we are absolutely covered by the experts in the field when it comes to this. And my question would be, you know, when you look over at turnkey or turnkey, well, with maintenance, you know, who's going to fill in the gaps? And who has the expertise to be able to do that? If, if we go with Duke, then you're responsible, soup to nuts.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we know who to go to and-
And that's a very good point.
Try to cross the street.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we do. We supply power and we, we stand 100% behind these units. We, we, we are monitoring these things from a, a monitoring station. If we see weather coming in, a storm, what have you, we're going to spin that generator up prior to the storm even hitting to make sure that we don't get any alarms. When the storms come in, like when Irma came in, we had tankers sitting at the Georgia, Florida line, ready to come in and fill these generators back up. You know, we take, we take all those concerns away. So when you compare the turnkey to the, the, the services, yeah, it's going to be more expensive. It's not for everybody and, and I'll be the first to admit it. But, you know, there's a lot of value of, um, you know, value added here with that respect that we're the service, that we, we're your utility provider and we stand behind these units. And as I started saying, we, we, we come in and we, we're monitoring every day 24/7. We come in and look at them once a week. We spin them up once a month. We come in and do the routine maintenance. We're doing, we're changing hoses, belts, batteries and so on. Like I stated before, it's probably taken better care of than my car.
What other schools do we have that have that uninterrupted credit?
Interruptible rate? I, I don't know. I, I don't, I didn't bring that information, yeah.
I mean, I can tell the board, if you want to look at, um, looking at the pill a little less, you can always take the $8,000 away from that 30 something thousand dollars a month and it's kind of like we were paying full rate. And I'd be curious, have we gone back to full rate at Bellevue? Or are they still, are CECO still giving us the uninterrupted rate that we were on?
There's not a generator at Bellevue High School.
I know, so what I'm saying is, we've now lost that credit.
We're paying, we're paying the demand charge now at Bellevue.
So that's probably, so that's offset then. So never mind, that's not such a good deal because we've lost it at Bellevue.
Oh, so is Teresa.
Well, I have as many questions as, as you do, because I was sitting there trying to quickly calculate the numbers. Not taking it in consideration timeframes of when things need to be done. But if we do the 34,000, I think you said it Reverend Cummings, it's 4.1 million dollars, uh, over 10 years. If we bought it outright, it's 2.5 million plus 500,000, so $3 million basically. So then it's a matter of finding the funds now to make that perp- purchase. And then I heard there were some other charges, so I, I almost think we need all of that information and come back to you and, and give you a, a better discussion. I, I, I was not included in the meeting when they met. So I did ask questions this week, but I'm finding out additional things. But just, it doesn't make sense to me, because it's like we're paying, uh, a lot of interest on whether we would, if we did, bought it outright. And, and if we, uh, pay for the 34,000, that's still almost $400,000 a year in additional. Yeah. So, you know, the credits and all of that, I think it needs to be evaluated and we can meet in a, in a couple of weeks and come back to you. But, um-
Cause I know we, we're on a short timeframe. We need to get something done. Because hurricane season's going to come again. We're still in it and it's going to come again.
I think either way, it's not budgeted. That's my point to you.
So if it's a $50,000 deal with you though, you will still maintain it for us?
We can pay for a maintenance plan.
The 500,000, that's what you were talking about.
No, 50,000 a month, a, a year.
A year.
Let me ask you this question.
That's a, that's an estimate.
If we buy our own, are we going to have the $25,000, um,
Yes.
fee? It says contract for engineering services of 25,000 if, only if Duke is not Elon.
Turnkey, so that would hopefully be included in the 2.5 million.
Right.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
And I think there was another question about maintenance. And our guys in technical services maintained, uh, generators now. But I, I don't know how that ties into all of that and it's, it's almost like we need some more people at the table to talk about.
One more question to you while I got you standing here. If we pay the $50,000 a year for maintenance, is it the same good maintenance we're going to pay? Are you going to be doing the same to the generator that you would do if we had a monthly $34,000 bill? Are you going to be here just as often as if we had the $34,000 bill? Well, then I think that sounds good. I feel like we, we don't have all of the pieces of the-
We don't have all the pieces.
Yes, we don't have all the pieces and I'm not sure why, you know, you're the one that lets us know what we can afford and what we can't. So I wish you had been part of the initial meeting so that we would have had more information to discuss today because we really are behind the eight ball.
Cause we do have to factor in if we have the 2.5 million, our interest would be on that also.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can you guys, can you guys meet in the next few weeks and, and get something back to us? And Teresa can be included, that way we can-
And, and is there any infrastructure money? Is there anything to help us that's out there to help offset some of this? We need those, we need those answered too. I mean, we have to, we have to do what's right for our community. There's absolutely no doubt about that.
But we have to be a little orderly.
But we have to be fiscal.
Fiscally conservative and responsible.
Responsible. And we have to, we have to have all the answers and I don't feel like we have.
I can make a suggestion then. We have a meeting on, uh, November 19th. Can, um, we revisit this then? Because we are in a timeframe and a crunch. And we're, I think we're going to find out we're even in crunch in other ways also with some buildings in, uh, the north part of the county that are going to be considered in this. So it's not even just this piece of the puzzle. There's other pieces of puzzle that we need to act upon now. And, um, so if we can revisit this on the 19th.
Cause there's a grant out there too.
There's grants out there and we're getting ready to find out more.
What is it?
The emergency, no, the emergency management grant, but it's for specific schools. But that grant is reimbursable. So the, there's an opportunity, if we do that, we, we're going to have to come up with over $2 million for that grant. That's something totally different and that's hardening other schools and it's available for us, but, uh, we're going to have to come up with that. So I'm just thinking of all of these different things.
Well, you're the lady.
In conjunction that we need to have conversations about.
So we want you all, when you meet, to think of every possible scenario that we will need to make good, sound fiscal decisions.
Thank you.
Are your shoulders feeling heavier, Ms. Boston Ellis?
From the holiday.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for being willing to say, you know, there's room for negotiation here.
Yep.
And hearing that, I think just tells all of us that we want to make sure about the details and being mindful of, of being in, in a crunch. And personally, I hate doing things under pressure like that, that are this important, but we are where we are. We've got to get the hard numbers, the hard facts and then make our best decision.
Yeah, and something to keep in mind too is that if, if you do the purchase, uh, the warranty falls on you. So if you have a catastrophic failure in that unit, um, it would, you know, double your bill. The other thing too is as we looked at, and I think we discussed at the previous meeting, is if we get up against the wall as far as the timeline, as far as the hurricane season coming in, we talked about bringing in a rental unit that we could place in, in, in there while we're finishing construction. And the same thing would happen if, if we had a failure on our own unit, we would pull another one in right away.
Let me ask a question since you said that. There's not a warranty or anything that comes along with this 2.5 million dollar generator? You're telling me it must be bought and it's ours and?
There, there, there is, yes. But it's typically about five years. And then the, to extend it out for 10 years is additional cost.
We want to know all those costs too.
We need to know how much it costs to increase our warranty, Ms. Boston Ellis, on our generator.
So, I mean, we warrant, we warranty the whole system because it's on, it's on our side of the meter.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Can I supply you anything additional or did I give you enough?
That was the time to ask.
Well, I just, you know, I'm sitting here thinking and, and this is, this is not just a school issue. This is a community issue. And I, there may be some room for some other municipalities to maybe weigh in on this. I mean, this is not a, this is not a Marion County school system. This is a community, um, issue to make sure our community is safe during hurricanes. So, you know, and I, I, I think we need to open those doors and have some of those discussions. So, and I'm willing, you know, and worked with the city on the stormwater, I'm willing to help do that because we need to really think about this whole picture.
Well, even across counties, since so many folks come to us for shelter too. Other counties, we keep their folks safe.
They're not compliant. How come they get by with not being compliant?
That's another question.
So maybe is there a way that we can reach out to some other, um,
If they're going to use us.
Municipality agencies and find out if they want to, what's, what they, what they think about this.
Absolutely. I mean, once, you know, once we have the information and we're saying this is a community issue, not a school district issue.
And time sensitive. And there's a difference between dragging our feet and doing our due diligence.
Right, absolutely.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also asked Teresa if she would look into see if, if there isn't anything from the state where they could finance this at like zero interest or since it's a community thing. And she said, not yet. She hasn't found anything yet. So that to me is disappointing that the legislature hasn't set that up for us.
Another mandate that they don't cover.
It was obviously happening 20 years ago because 20 years ago they did this and the board did it, so. 20 years ago, the school system took care of the generators, is what I'm saying. So it's not like this is new.
Right. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Bowen.
Morning. Morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, District Staff. So continued on emergency management. First of all, I want to say we've only got 24 more days of hurricane season, so that's good. We almost got through all the alphabet and storms this year. But wanted to say thank you to the partnerships, uh, working with, you know, all your staff, uh, your district staff and employees, been working on this, uh, 2019 shelter assessment. It's been, uh, been going on for probably about three months. We've had about nine additions, uh, to our proposals and looking, um, at our, um, shelter decisions for Marion County. Wanted to say, um, you know, it's meeting with not only your staff, but emergency management, but also with the state of Florida in our, uh, shelter retrofitting, uh, trying to see what we can do, uh, in this assessment for Marion County. And one of the things in previous meetings that we have had is we have discussed the deficits, you know, for Marion County, for the size of our population for Marion County. Again, it's going to be interesting to see just what the deficits that we have recognized in previous, since our last census, what our census is going to be, uh, going forward, um, as new census comes, uh, before us. One of the things is recognizing is, you know, speaking with, uh, the state and looking at, you know, you mentioned about other counties is, is the deficits that are surrounding Marion County, our coastal areas, Levy County, Citrus County, Hernando County. And one of the, uh, interesting things that was brought to our, you know, our attention is when we talk about the retrofit and the money that was, is being offered to Marion County is because they have recognized that all roads lead to Marion County and Alachua County. So we're not just the only county. Alachua County is feeling this impact as well. So one of the things, especially when we're looking at these coastal communities, um, and especially when it comes to special needs and just general population, is most of those counties are going to be evacuating a lot sooner than Marion County residents are going to be. They're going to be coming in, land to our shelters before our residents are getting into our shelters as well. So one of the things that is, you know, with the, you know, looking, and it was good with this assessment. It forced me to be able to actually go out to every single one of our shelters and go and visit every single classroom and look at our plans and look at our construction of our schools and, you know, really get a grasp of what we have. And this is an assessment that should be done on a regular basis, you know, and looks, you know, that we will plan for, you know, going forward in the future as well. So one of the things that, um, you know, we want to take in considerations, you know, with this assessment is looking at our continued planning, you know, looking at some of our schools, you know, when we looked at some of the schools that we have, that we currently have, is, you know, some of those schools are back in the early, you know, 90s, you know, some of the construction dates of these schools and looking at what the construction, um, you know, wind speeds were for these schools and these shelters, you know, during that time. At that time, you know, they were up to code. They were, you know, uh, for, you know, those type of wind speeds, you know, 100 miles per hour. But now, you know, we're looking at construction with our newer schools, 140 to 150 mile per hour shelters. So part of this shelter assessment that we looked at and we put this document together is we were looking at the years that the schools were constructed, at what wind speed that they were built to. And then with that is what our future is going forward is looking at, you know, there comes to a time, just like when you own a car, you know, it, it comes time to where it's time to upgrade and start looking at, you know, uh, better features, you know, stronger, better construction warranties and so forth. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing also with our future of, of these shelters. So one of the things as I want to go through, uh, through our, our presentation is in the handout, and also the PowerPoint kind of basically goes through, uh, the highlights of the handout that I presented to you. So review of our current 14 schools, uh, we did a 2018 to 2019 impact comparisons. So in 2018, as if we look on, on page three of the handout that I provided to you, we were originally at 11,106 spaces for, uh, general population for sheltering in Marion County. So one of the things that we went through and we looked in within our assessments in 2019, we were able to increase from 11,000 to a little over 15,924 spaces, uh, here in Marion County. Some of those things that we looked at is when we went back, because this assessment and this plan was put together so many years ago, there was a lot of changes in classrooms. So when the initial plan was put together, there was classrooms that were computer labs, that were science labs, where it had gas and water. They had fixed desks. And then over the years, uh, there was new construction where the classrooms have now changed to regular classroom space. And we had always had those on our list as not usable space. So again, we went through and we were able to find out quite a few spaces that we were actually able to be, that were usable, you know, in 2019. One of the biggest, uh, things that we found is with, with Vanguard, Vanguard High School and Lake Weir High School, we were also able to pick up quite a few numbers, uh, there with the round buildings. There was retrofits that were done years ago. That was never reported to the state and that we never included into our emergency, uh, plan here in Marion County. So, uh, with retrofits that was done years ago, we were able to pick up over 2,000 spaces just between those two buildings, uh, there alone. The 2019 impact increased our spaces through the 14 shelters to over 4,316, uh, spaces. With the completion of retrofitting spaces, uh, we can look like, you know, as the plan and what's going to be presented to you today is we can increase our impact for retrofits to over 28,000, uh, spaces here in Marion County. So, uh, within the comparisons, if you can look, uh, this plan here is again, it's a very simplified. We worked on this, uh, with your staff. And again, this is something that we talked about, is having so many different documents that were out there, is having one document that can be included into your plan. If you have a, a principal that is new to that shelter, uh, school, uh, a week before the storm, they can actually look at this plan here. They can look, it's all color-coded, so they know what, uh, is available spaces, what's not available and what is a last resort. And if you look at the top of each of the school shelters, it has the designation of what the wind speed is and the year that it was built, whether it has a generator or not, and it's going to be very easily to be able to access and be able to utilize, you know, during time, you know, of an opening of a shelter. Now, one of the things, like I said, is in the opening, is if you look, you know, if we go to like Bellevue High School, we see that, you know, the first addition of the construction was 1994 and then they had a rebuild in 2009. And it shows the wind speeds, you know, that it was rated for. So again, just because we have these 14 schools, it's not guaranteed that we're going to use every one of these schools. And again, if we have a category five, if we got something where we know that we're going to get 140, 150 mile an hour, you know, sustained winds coming into Marion County, on the east part of Marion County, we're probably not going to recommend some of these schools, you know, as we'll, or those evacuations. And again, so that's the reason why going forward with our planning, as we're looking at these newer schools with retrofits, is to be able to- at these newer schools with retrofits, is to be able to use state funding money to be able to fortify these schools and be able to, you know, knowing that they are built to a better construction, you know, to be able to put our residents of Marion County in. So, so any questions up to this point so far? All right, so basically is, I want to kind of just go through, is, you know, as we went through the, our schools, is Bellevue High School is, at this point here, just understanding, working with the state, the state normally each year gets about $3 million a year in retrofits, that's for the whole state of Florida. So, bringing in the state infrastructure of, for building construction for shelters from Tallahassee, she was here with us for a week, couple of weeks ago, and we actually went through each one of our schools and actually looked at the construction of them, those that are what they call is a least risk decision-making process, is understanding is with the construction of the building, what it was built to, the wind speeds, also looking at whether if there are shutters, whether it's impact glass and so forth, is, and then making a decision on whether or not, you know, this would be a good decision for sheltering for our residents. So, when we went through this, like I said, is about $3 million a year is slated for the state of Florida. As we went through, and again, understanding that majority of the people from South Florida, from our surrounding, you know, coastal partners or surrounding counties, is most of these individuals are going to be coming to Marion County, they seen to where they can justify putting this kind of money into Marion County, into our shelters, is, you know, and they had extra money, you know, left over from previous projects or other districts or other counties in the state of Florida, that did not utilize their money, and they're actually looking to use that money. So, so basically is, once these projects were put out, and you should have gotten the handout here from the state, is basically $2.6 million, the state is saying that they can validate and be able to put into Marion County for our shelters. So, these are kind of the things that we, we went through these, we broke them down, you know, per school, is installing large missile impact resistant wind screens or laminated, large missile impact resistant windows and glass up to 1,150 square foot for Bellevue High School's cafeteria. The funding from the state, again, is $86,500, and that will gain 544 spaces.
Wow, that's a great return.
Bellevue High School, Buildings 3, 4, and 5, and this is one of the things as we've seen, is our first floors, we do have the retrofits, we do have screening that was on the first floors for our current, what we're using for sheltering now. So, by taking these numbers and actually fortified and putting these, the same type of screening, shield, on the windows, for one, it will be the same aesthetics look, you know, for the school, and also, one of the things I want to emphasize too, was with putting this glass, putting these screens, not only, you know, does it impact for our sheltering needs for, for hurricane shelters, but also for the security of the school as well. So, by doing Buildings 3, 4, 5, and 10, the second floor, retrofits, it's about a $225,000 project funded by the state, and will gain an additional 1,084 spaces just at Bellevue High School.
Mr. Bowlen, when, when you mentioned the large missile impact resistant, that doesn't mean bulletproof though, does it?
No, ma'am. Okay. Now, Bellevue, we looked at Bellevue High School and Bellevue Middle School, and again, the construction built was good, just like the rest of the schools, that where we could use it for sheltering. The only thing that they had recognized with this project, and this is something that we are looking for the 2020, 2021, if the school, uh, school district and board agrees they want to go forward with it, and we can reapply in July of this year, of this coming 2021. But one of the things that they had recognized is, is the construction of the wall, of the concrete goes all the way up, but there's this little space that's up here just above the roof line, is for that to be able to make the retrofits, they would either A, have to come in with plywood on the inside of the gymnasium and put that in there, and then they would paint it to where it would look the same as where it is now, or using like a 22 gauge metal to be able to come from the outside, and that would, would give it that impact resistant, you know, from, you know, wood or any flying debris, you know, for the gym. So, so again, this is something that we're looking at, you know, for the 2020, 2021, you know, as soon as those funds come back available for next year. So, Bellevue Middle School, Building 7, is kind of the same thing, is looking at installing the same thing, is window screens, impact resistant glass, door and hardware replacement or upgrade for hurricane ratings. Again, this project would be from the state for $86,250, and the space will gain 384 spaces at Bellevue Middle School. Building 6, the cafeteria, kind of the same thing, is just, there was a few other things that we had to look at there, is anchoring of the roof vending system is needed, appropriate for wind codes. This project is $146,250, and those spaces that would be gained there is 395. Now, one of the things that we looked at is, again, going, looking at the future, is Marion Oaks Elementary. As you look in the 2018, 2019 retrofit spreadsheet, we marked that out in red. At this, because of the population of shelters in that general Marion Oaks area, and because of the amount of money that we are, the state has already, you know, offered us, is we looked at taking this out and looking to reapply for this in the 2020, 21 process, and again, this would be the same thing as what we're doing to the rest of the district for schools that we currently have now, and by doing that, we'd have to reevaluate what the money, you know, what it would cost from the state to be able to provide that for us, but if by doing that, we can look at picking up 2,768 more spaces for Marion Oaks Elementary.
So, we would take Marion Oaks off the list for one, just one year?
Well, probably what we're kind of looking at doing, in the consensus of your staff and emergency management, and looking at what the school, what the state of Florida, is, you know, looking at like Bellevue High School, you know, some of these older schools that are starting to show their age, you know, they're still available for, you know, if, you know, we're looking for those mega impact of those major storms, is we would rather have a school like Marion Oaks Elementary versus Bellevue High School for, you know, a category five hurricane. So, and again, you know, is by having the retrofits, having these, not necessarily saying that we're going to use them 100%, but again, is for future planning down the road, the money's available now from the state, is to be able to capitalize on that and planning for the future, you know, and that's what we want to do, you know, as, as a county. Same thing, Legacy Elementary, doing the entire building, basically it's a $432,000 project, and we'd be able to gain 2,303 spaces for impact here as well. So, one of the things that, you know, when we were looking at, and again, it gives the option for the district and for the board to be able to make decisions on whether or not they want screens, impact screens, or being able to use glass. Again, is, you know, for like the cafeteria here, is, you know, you know, and again, it's your decision, but is looking at using glass, you know, because you still have that appeal of that clean, you know, fresh look, you know, with glass, being able to have good visualization out into the courtyard, but again, that will be a con, your staff to make those decisions of which way you want to go. South Ocala Elementary, Buildings 2, 3, 5, and 6, looking at doing a kind of the same thing in a couple of these schools, is Saddlewood and also South Ocala Elementary, is you all have a communications tower on, that was used years ago, that I've already checked with your staff to make sure that, I guess the towers are still there, they, the district wants to have them removed, there is a cost to them, but part of the retrofit money that the state of Florida is willing to take down those towers as well, at their cost, and again, to be able to, that also helps us because, you know, of the tower, if it was to come down on the building, you know, we're able to capitalize on that as well. So, that's a $302,000 project, and spaces we'll gain will be 1,533. Now, Saddlewood, this was where we had discussions last year with Saddlewood, we had the roll-down shutters at Saddlewood, and the company that, when these were actually put in years ago, is they're no longer in business, the actual gears on the inside are plastic, and again, where it was brought to our attention that we can get them down if we needed them this year or next year, but the problem is possibly getting them back up. So, part of the retrofit would be to be able to provide the glass or the screens and the hardware for the doors, to be able to, be able to use it in Buildings 3 and 4, to be able to make them the same style as the previous screens that are on there currently at this time. State funded would be $126,250, and spaces we'll gain by adding these buildings 540 seats. So, those are for the other additional buildings, for the buildings that are currently there, there is no new spaces because basically all we're doing is actually replacing the shutters with the screens or the glass, and, and then providing new hardware and replacement upgrade to hurricane ratings. Now, so now when we get to Westport High School, as we talked before with Westport High School, is at this current time, is, that's our current special needs school. So, basically, we were looking for every bit of space that we could use to be able to increase our special needs, you know, for this hurricane season and then, you know, going forward. So, a couple of the areas is the ROTC area and the Ag Building, again, we got nice layouts, we got nice open floors, we got linoleum floors, you know, use them for special needs, where some of the things that, where it came to consideration is basically putting in shelter screens, impact screens and glass, the two roll-up doors in ROTC and also in the Ag Building, to be able to replace those with impact roll-up doors, that were approximately about $70,000 apiece, to be able to bring those up to impact, and then, you know, increasing our numbers to the cafeteria and those other buildings. So, along when we were discussing this, is with the Health Department, is to be able to increase our numbers for Westport High School. With the retrofits, we're picking up an additional probably almost 250 special needs by doing these retrofits at, at Westport. Then we started looking at, because of the construction and the newer construction of the buildings, and, you know, talking with Ms. Rohr, talking with your staff, is one of the things is with special needs, is when we transport those with special needs to Westport, most of the times they have family members, they have husbands, wife, well, the caretakers are normally with them, but they have other family members that live in that resident with them. So, therefore, we have to transport them, after we drop off there, we have to take them to another general population shelter. So, we can actually even start taking those family members, so basically it's a one-stop, it's going to cut down on our transportation times, getting them to the shelters, and we can be able to take them in as well.
We add the pets.
And that's my next.
Okay, good, thank you.
Next conversation is talking with Dr. Mayor, is, you know, and that was the other thing, was with special needs, is, you know, we'd have to take their pets and then have to drop them off and then transport them to, you know, Vanguard or to Marion County Animal Service.
So, we're making three or four stops, drop off, drop off, drop off.
Right. So, is looking at, you know, talking with Marion County Animal Control, is to be able to, you know, a small pet shelter, you know, for special needs and for general population. So, we're basically, at that point there, is we can pick up by doing the retrofits just at Westport High School, is another 4,000 spaces right there by the retrofits. So, so basically, this project here for Westport High School, it's basically, the state said it's going to cost about $860,000, it will gain 243 special needs and over 4,000 of general population with this project as well. So, so as you kind of basically look through this document here, is, again, it's color-coded, one of the things I like to kind of recognize too, is when you get down to the blue sections, these are areas, these are like hallways, these are stages, places that we necessarily don't, you know, recommend for sheltering, but if we knew it was, was a last resort, we knew we had a mega storm coming in, that we know that we can use those areas, we know exactly what our square footage is, working with your staff to be able to make sure that, you know, you know, and that's at the 20 square foot per person, and if we had to cram more in there, you know, we know that we can bring those standards down, but again, this is ideally a working document here in going forward.
I have a question, Ms. King.
Ms. McCall.
The, the cost to retrofit, is that the total cost, so the school district would not be out anything, the state's picking up all the retrofit cost?
Now, depending on how, it's 100%, they are going to pay 100%. Now, depending on how the contracts work, we'll have to discuss with your staff, is, you know, and there's ways to be able to do that, is, you know, working with your contractors on how, you know, the projects are put in and how they do their draws, but it is 100% covered.
So, that's not just the equipment, that's the labor cost to get it done?
Everything, 100%, 100%.
Okay. We gotta be real sure about that.
It's reimbursed, right? So, we have to come up with the money upfront?
I'll speak to that if you don't mind.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The 2.6 million is what the state is offering. We don't know what the actual cost is, so yes, our cost could be higher than 2.6 million, it could be lower than 2.6 million. The state has identified some estimates of cost, but the beauty's in the detail and so is the devil. So, at a lot of our schools, not so much in cafeterias, but a lot of our schools, for instance, have emergency egress windows. You can't put a screen on there if it takes more than one motion to get out, because you have to be able to get out in a fire in a day like today where there is no hurricane. Years ago, when these retrofits were done, we had to intercept the screens that were put on the egress windows and redesign them so that when you open the window, you open the screen. Otherwise, if you have to fumble around trying to get a window open and there's a fire, you've got an issue. So, there are some things we have to review, it's not a matter of just buy a screen, put it on the wall, times X amount of windows, it's 86,000, costs change, manufacturers go in and out of business, the hurricane code changes the type of screening, fire code changes the type of screening, all that has to be vetted while we're doing it. So, the answer to the question is, will the state pay for everything? They have offered up to 2.6 million available, but we do not know if that actually covers everything. That's their intent, but until we get into the cost, we don't know. What'll happen in, if we run over is we simply can't do everything that is listed in the program, would be my guess, either that or we will have to.
We will prioritize, and then we will begin quickly.
Yes.
To figure out what it is that get those costs and everything, because this isn't something we want to sit on, because again, we have less than a year before hurricane season starts again.
Well, not only that, but it's a grant, so if we don't use it in a timely manner, when?
Two years.
Is it two years?
December 2021 is.
Okay, so if we don't even act upon it, then we lose it.
Well, we have to confirm too, by the 23rd of this month, that we're.
We have a limited time to accept, with the process quickly, is that they propose to the school board, in this case to Marion County Public Schools, a grant offering of up to 2.6 million based on what they see in the field through the site visit. So, the school district accepts the grant, and then we have two years to complete the work, and as we bill out and we send those bills to the state, they reimburse them as they come in. So, obviously, we'd have to have some cash flow upfront just to get started, and then the reimbursements come in time. It's not all at once at the end of two years, but it's certainly not upfront either. It's as you, you pay as you go and you get reimbursed within, say, several weeks. So, that's sort of.
So, the reimbursement comes how fast?
Uh, well, it's probably, I would imagine it, you know, it's a week and a half or so for us to process and invoice, get payment out and get it up to the state, and I imagine it's probably a week, two weeks, three weeks maybe for them to.
I just didn't want.
Deposit money or cut a check or something.
It'd be like FEMA money or anything like that. I want to make sure we get our money.
30 years from now.
We would probably do this to Preston and go, we'll figure out something else, we, the grants is.
Do we, can we, and because we have till November 23rd to let the state know, so can we put this on the agenda as an emergency agenda item for Tuesday so that they can get moving with this? Because why would we not want to do this?
It's something, even if it doesn't pay for 100% of every single thing listed, even if it pays 85 or 90%, that's still better than us going at it alone or not having any sort of mechanism to gain more seats.
So, which projects would we jump on first?
That's what's going to be.
Well, we would probably have to confer with the Emergency Operations Center to talk about, well, where's our soft spots, where do we really, you know, what's quick to do and what gains us the most seats in the most, the shortest time span?
Paying for your buck.
Yeah, I would think the ones we start. Yeah, I would think the ones we start to get money in quicker would be the ones we want to look at.
Okay.
So Mr. Gibbs, can we do that? Ms. King, are you good with putting it on as an emergency?
Oh, no, I don't even know. It may, I know when we were in that meeting with Jonathan and I didn't look and I know we talked about putting it on. It may have already be on there and I just didn't catch it. Of course, not, it can be. If it's not, then it can, we'll put it on as an emergency. But I know there was intent to put it on there, but maybe it didn't. Okay. And then also, before Robert leaves and while you're both are up there, can you also discuss about North Marion High and the new building?
Now, Mr. Lepper was just, I'm sorry for that. Mr. Lepper was just sharing that the proposal, all the state needs is an indication that we are interested. There's nothing that the board has to sign or approve at this point. So it may be just a matter, and I'll confer with the grant people of just the grant people knowing that the board is interested in going in that direction and they simply send an email to the state and that may be all that's needed to avoid having to.
They'll create a contract that will come back from board.
Then the board would have to sign the contract at that point.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, I'm sorry, you were asking a?
About North Marion and the new building and.
Oh, cafeteria building.
Yeah, the cafeteria and stuff like that. So while we're all here and can hear the same message about that.
Well, we're in, we're in design on the cafeteria and we had figured when we started design, barring a, an exception letter, that we would look to make this a shelter. Now, if I'll defer to Mr. Boland in terms of, because he would be the one that would be giving the exemption letter. There's a point where you get past design and it starts to cost you money to redesign it, either to make it a shelter if it's not, or to take it out of making it a shelter if it is. Now, the mechanic, electrical, plumbing system's a little different because that happens a little bit later in design, so there's still a bit of time there. But as far as the structure, we're getting really close to knowing, you know, if it's going to be hurricane shelter, then we got to go in this path in design. If not, then we go in this path, but we're pretty much right at the crossroads. So we would need to know very quickly whether this is going to be a shelter or not. Otherwise, it will impede us getting started on the cafeteria and it throws us out of kilter as far as finishing next year. That's about all I can really offer.
Can you give like a rough estimate on how much it would cost if we did go back and had to redo the plans and include the shelter cost?
Well, we, we gave direction to the architect after the board approved the design part and getting started on it that, well, they're always a shelter unless they're exempted is the approach we've always taken with any school or any building we've ever built, at least since I've been here. And so it's hard to budget for it as a shelter because we barely a lot of times have the funds to build the building in the first place. So to make it a shelter, there's a new criteria called the International Code Conference 500 Series. It is a much more rigid code as far as shelter spaces than ever been built before. I think there's only been one facility in the state that's actually been completed under the ICC 500 code. What it really means is a lot more oversight, a lot more cost to it, and it's really hard to gauge it. We've never done an ICC 500 judged building. So as far as the cost, if you're going to try to make a building that's not a shelter a building, it can be an immense cost because you lose the advantage of the structure being built already. And that can run you between $500,000 to $1 million extra on a building this size. Because we, if we were looking, bless you to do it while we're designing the building, there's a little bit of cost economy there because if you've got to design a transformer and your air conditioning system, you just design it right off the bat to be able to be retrofitted for a generator backup power. So the cost comes down a little bit if you're designing it turnkey upfront rather than retrofit later. But we expect this cost somewhere to be in the half a million to $600,000 range additional to make it a shelter. That's, that's what we're estimating so far. We're, we're still early enough in design. We don't have anything concrete from the, excuse me, from the contractor yet, but based on past history and trends, that's about what we pegged the additional cost to be.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that's something good for us to consider when we're thinking about the generator, like, it's kind of like if maybe he could provide an exemption and like the cost wise and it saves us. So that's where I was going with that conversation a little bit.
Are you thinking like on the forest generator, we wouldn't need the entire, offset some of that or?
Yeah, so, yeah, so basically.
The number of spaces.
Correct. Well, that would probably be a question for Preston.
So one of the conversations that we were having is in discussion of this.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
We did the exemption letter for Osceola Cafeteria because again, we looked at the size of the, of the cafeteria and the location because of parking and so forth, it just, it really is not going to increase our, our shelter needs at this point here for that location. Now, with, with North Marion High School Cafeteria because of the size of it and because of the location, so basically is if we weren't going to go forward with the shelter, shelter of retrofits and the generator was not going to go in at Forest High School is I, we would need to make sure and confirm that, that North Marion High School was going to be able to be built to hurricane standards. Because basically, we only have 500 seats or 500 spaces, you know, between North Marion Middle School, it's like 200 and some spaces, I think it is, and then Fort McCoy. So basically, our numbers are very shallow for the north end of the county. So I personally is, I would like to see the savings, you know, for the school district, you know, if we can not build that to, you know, hurricane specs for that, if we knowing that we're going to be able to get where our real needs right now is for special needs for, you know, to be able to have the AC component for our special needs. So willing to, you know, if we can, you know, for sure, if we're going to go that route with the generator for Forest High School and go for planning that way, is to do the exemption letter for North Marion High School Cafeteria. Now, with that being said, is in talking with Mr. Knight and your staff is, you know, the codes and standards at this time here are a lot higher, you know, even just in the building standards without the, the EHPA standards. So basically, that's something that we can do is planning now is for retrofits, once that cafeteria is built, that we can get retrofit money from the state going forward for that north end of the county is to be able to do the same thing that we're doing with these other schools, you know, going forward. Can, it's going to be a newer construction, you know, newer building type thing. It would definitely benefit the north end of the county. And then if we can also is when we are building that cafeteria, if we can put it into the plans to where there is a transfer switch to where emergency management can bring in a generator and use that, you know, with the retrofits and have that as a ability at the north end of county as well.
So there's no way to get the quote retrofit money on the original fit where we are?
That's, you know, again, as you mentioned before, it, it bewilders me, the fact that is we cannot, there's no state money for generators for sheltering, period, you know, is that is just, I'm bewildered on that, you know? And the fact is that there's money for retrofit, but we can't spend that money wisely on the forefront instead of on, on the back end of it. So unfortunately, you know, there's, our hands are tied, you know, at that point there with that as well.
Yep. Any questions?
Thank you, Indians.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boland. And also, since we're still on this discussion, and Beth, you mentioned asking, you're the expert on fundraising. So if you don't mind, if you would reach out to, you know, our other.
Municipalities?
Uh huh. If you don't mind reaching out to them and see if there's any interest in helping us between.
She wears a money hat.
Yeah, I was like, that is her expertise. So we are going to hand that to you. So thank you so much. All right, is there any public comment? See and done? And I think we probably need like a 10-minute break. Okay.[1149.75]
Yes. Are the mics hot? Oh, do you mind if we switch you and David? Okay, thank you.
They said when you're ready, they'll just turn the mics on.
Okay, okay, so you'd have to do that.
It's unusual for Kevin to disappear. Need to make sure he's okay.
We are reconvening at 10:50 a.m. and we will be discussing medical marijuana policy with Mr. David Ellers.
Good morning, Chairman King, board members, Mrs. Mayor, or Dr. Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, Ms. Prestapino. We had put together a procedure for the administration of medical marijuana based on a student need at one school. And just recently, the state released a memorandum that they are now requiring schools to adopt medical marijuana policy. As I shared at that time, after consulting with Mr. Gibbs and doing a little bit of research on my own, the state has provided little to no guidance. This is pretty much the only guidance we've received. Legally, Neola will not provide us a policy because they will not provide one that they can't enforce at any level of court that this would happen to reach. And the biggest concern with any kind of local medical marijuana policy is the fact that it's in conflict with federal law. Just like these distributors, if you've seen some of the TV shows about Colorado and some of these places that have legalized marijuana, the money can't be handled through the federal banking system. There's all sorts of constraints because of federal law. That being said, we were told that we have to have a policy in place by December and have that sent to them. They recommended several different policies to be looked at. They, and recommended was probably the incorrect word, they sent three different policies to us. However, after reviewing those policies, I felt like since we had modeled the procedure after the policy in Latchua County, that that might be the one that you were most comfortable with going forward in a pretty quick way. The biggest thing I like about the policy that Latchua County has is it really minimizes the impact to the school staff and liability of the school staff. Some of the other policies require some paperwork being done by the principal, the principal verifying certain things. And I just really felt like it's important not to put our people in that position. Our RNs cannot handle this, they cannot touch it, they cannot do anything with it at risk of their license. Our board attorney can't really defend any of this in any way, shape, or form at risk of his license. So I think the minimal way, or the most minimalistic way that we can implement this is through a policy similar to Latchua's where we have the parents sign the child out. They administer whatever they're going to administer and send the child back in. It also, the clause that I like in there is if we ever get notice from the federal government that this policy puts our funding from the federal government in jeopardy, that we can revoke this. Immediately. Are there any questions?
A parent taking responsibility.
Right. We find with this.
Yeah, that doesn't need to be on the school district. It needs to stay in the hands of the parents.
Yeah, I think that's probably the most protective of all levels of our school system, including board members.
I agree. All right, we all are in agreeance, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Feel better.
There'll be a public hearing on this upcoming, and it'll, we'll meet the timeline that state has set.
It's scheduled for rulemaking.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment?
In December.
Any none? Now we will discuss and review of district-wide attendance zones with Mr. Ayers.
Good, still morning, good morning. Karen Chin, Pastor Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, Ms. Prestapino. I'm here to present the attendance boundary review. But before I start, I want to just give you an update real quick. McIntosh Area Charter School has secured a new principal. Her name is Dr. Jennifer Roach. No relation to the former person. She comes to Marion County from the Jacksonville area, Orange Springs. She, her last job is she was the Director of Human Resources for Bradford County School District. She served as a principal, she served as assistant principal, she served as Executive Director of the foundation. She has a vast number of experience. She was an ESE consultant under a private contract with McEnopie Charter School. So she's familiar with charter schools around, and they're very happy and excited. She is on board, she's actively engaged, she was at her principal's meeting on Tuesday here. And so they are looking up and going, well, they are fully staffed. They're still missing a, I believe it's a paraprofessional, from what they've got, so.
Thank you.
Just wanted to give you that update. All right, so we're going to start with the attendance boundaries. And before we start looking at attendance boundary, we want to look at overall district capacity. So where we look at district capacity, we look at total student stations and seats that we have district-wide versus the total student enrollment. And then we look at open seats and our percent utilization. So on our elementary, we have nineteen six oh four total students currently enrolled. This is as of two weeks ago on our notice. And our total seats is twenty-two thousand eighteen, which gives us two thousand four hundred and fourteen empty elementary seats. And that shows an eighty-nine percent usage of our students to seat ratio for elementary school. For middle school, we have nine thousand nine hundred and five total students, for eleven thousand eighty-three total seats, for an open seats of one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight, so an eighty-nine percent usage. And with our high school, we're at twelve thousand one hundred and eleven total students, twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-four open seats. Total seats for seven hundred and sixty-three open seats for ninety-four percent usage. Now we're going to look at where those seats are. Looking at our elementary schools, this is a similar slide that I showed you last year. These are elementary schools that are over a hundred percent capacity. Given with the season, I went with some red and green colors. If it's a red color, that means that school went up in total capacity, or total percentage of capacity, and green means they went down. So currently, that's where we have, and then you see the open seats that we have, and these are all in negative numbers since these schools are over a hundred percent capacity. We have schools that are in ninety to ninety percent, ninety-nine percent. We see that we have five schools that are in green because they went down in capacity, so our capacity situation is getting better. We have schools that are eighty to eighty-nine percent capacity, again, quite a few in green because their enrollment numbers have changed. Ma'am, okay, gotcha. And then our elementary schools that are below eighty percent capacity. And we have two that actually went up. If you'll notice, Bellevue Santos and Reddick Collier went up. Those schools, you know, have done better. And so the school, students are actually attending those schools now.
Ayers, I got a question. How come NH Jones and Madison Street are never on these lists?
Because those aren't considered zone schools. I mean, Madison Street does, or I mean, Dr. NH Jones does have a walk zone now, but those schools aren't schools that have an attendant zone.
I would think that for transparency, because oftentimes we get calls, I get calls, wondering what's the capacity of schools, stuff like that. I think if you could add it on there some type of way, it helps because people could come back and see where that school is over or under, or whatever it is. Because there's a feeling sometimes that we get the, they'll say that that school has space, has to have spaces.
Right. I understood. Yeah, I didn't include those in there, but like I said, those are our traditional zone schools for that. But I can, we can do that.
It would be nice to, I agree. So the school board knows when people call that there are options for kindergartners or whatever.
Right.
At grade level, what openings there are even.
Right.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is the heat map. I like these heat maps because it's of good visual representation. This is the heat map for last year, which shows you where our over-capacity schools were versus the under. The darker the red, the more capacity, the lower, the cooler the number, the less. And this is our capacity this year. And so this is a visual representation of our, our schools that were over-capacity, there's movement. And I'll talk about why that is in a bit, but there's, there's movement with our elementary schools. Go to middle schools, all our middle schools are here, again, they're all on one page. We have three middle schools that are over a hundred percent capacity. And then we have the ones that are down below. And again, our middle school heat map, again, and then when we switch over to our heat map, we have more cooler area. We still have three in the central area that are still over a hundred percent.
Why is there phone being?
Am I hearing voices?
Oh, yeah, I just turned the phone ring a minute ago in here, too.
Okay. All right, sorry about that. Our high school numbers, when we look at our high school numbers, again, I have three high schools that are over a hundred percent capacity-wise, and then going down there. But our high school, we're, have a much higher utilization of our seats, and we have less empty seats at the high school level. As it goes. Again, my high school heat map from last year, and then we go to this year. So that we have, you know, we still have the same number of high schools that are over a hundred percent. Going forward. I want to talk about, again, things we focused on last year. Our issue that we have in the district is our elementary capacity. We have two thousand four hundred and fourteen empty elementary seats. We have an issue in the South that we talked about last year that we're busting at the seams in certain things. And, but we have two thousand four hundred and fourteen empty seats. So we can't even approach to the state to say, we need a new school, so what do we want to do? So what we've got to do is we've got to look at our capacity issue. I included this slide in here so that you can see north versus south of the county where our capacity issues are. In the north, we have eight schools that are dividing line with one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven empty seats. So forty-seven percent of our excess capacity lies in the north with just eight schools. In the south, we have twenty-three schools with one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven empty seats. So fifty-three percent of our excess capacity lies in the south. But that's with twenty-three schools. And so we have an issue that we need to look at to fix. And so last year, we looked and we did a lot of work of trying to redistrict and rezone the schools in the south, and we created just as many problems because of the locations of the schools that we had. So we've got to look at reducing capacity. One of the ways that we reduce capacity is repurposing facilities and then adjusting the FISH reports. Because the FISH reports, there's numbers of the schools, there's seats that are tied to the FISH report. Option one for reducing capacity is we're looking at Reddick Collier Elementary School. There's one wing that's off that was built in nineteen fifty-two. The remainder of the school was built in the nineties. There are a hundred and twenty student stations currently in that wing that are counted against us. All right, now, part of that wing is used for, we lease it out to other facilities and things like that. But that is an easy option to be able to segregate that wing off, make it a facilities, make it a professional development center, transportation, anything that we can do, but not have student stations there.
So the next slide is going to address Fessidin. And before we get to Mr. Ayers' hypothetical recommendation, I need you to know that I met with the Fessidin Alumni Association, and they were very vocal, very passionate. They do not want the school repurposed. I had went to them to see about an idea, perhaps repurposing Fessidin, making it like the Howard Academy of the North, making it a museum, especially as we move forward with the African-American Task Force and the exemplary status. They said no, that to them, the legacy of Fessidin would be with, with the little bodies in, in the school. That's how they see it, it moving forward. So I wanted you to know that I met with them, that that was their recommendation. About a week or so after, the president of the association, Mr. Grimes, came to me and met with me, and he would like to come and talk to you in February about his idea. He didn't want to come too soon because he's working with his folks, and he would like to address you all in February. So we're going to get him on that, that work session. So when he flips a slide, it, we would be remiss if we didn't present the idea to you. But again, the Alumni Association said no, and I wanted you to know that.
Option two. And again, I appreciate Dr. Mayor reaching out to the, the community up there and getting their input in what we do because this is a process, and we're going to have to make some decisions. Option two would be to repurpose Fessidin Elementary School. Like Dr. Mayor said, we could make it a staff development center, Howard Academy Center with community services, you know, at that school. That will remove four hundred and twenty-eight student stations from our capacity. Option three is to relocate repurposed Bellevue Santos Elementary School. And I say relocate because we still need an elementary school for those students. And that will remove six hundred and ninety-four. There's lots of issues at Bellevue Santos that need to be addressed. We're looking at approximately, right now, in the five year, when I looked at the five-year plan, over thirteen million dollars of retrofit upgrades that need to happen to get it back into code for Bellevue Santos Elementary School. If anybody's ever been to Bellevue Santos Elementary School at dismissal time, it is dangerous. It is extremely dangerous. There's basically one way in, one way out, off a busy road. And so in looking at repurposing that facility and then moving, possibly moving Bellevue Santos, still in the Bellevue Santos zone but further south, that will create some problem, that will solve some problems that we have with two schools being too close to each other. If we looked at this hypothetical approach to capacity, all three options will remove one thousand two hundred and forty-two student stations from our inventory. That'll bring our elementary utilization up to ninety-four percent. At that point, we're able to have a conversation with DOE about building a new facility. And I said the district, you then can look at redistricting the southern elementary schools because we could move Bellevue Santos away from the legacy Greenway path that we ran into last year with them being so close to each other, further south by forty-four area where there's more students and be able to make it bigger to accommodate. And that would make it a lot easier to accommodate redistricting the southern school districts. And then possibly even a K-eight facility in the south because you're going to have that property where like where middle school was, and look at different options. So these are options of reducing capacity within our elementary district. Other approaches to capacity, to tell you, controlled open enrollment, it is working. Since I've been in my position where I have a tighter control on controlled open enrollment and a better policy of doing that, and we give priority of students moving from an overcrowded to an overcrowded school, we, we help that. And it is working. People are calling us moving to good schools. Public relations, our elementary schools are getting better. When I first started my job, I would get calls of people wanting to move because it's a bad school. I'm not getting those calls anymore. Any calls that I get to move, it's family situations, it's situational things that they want to leave a school to go to a different school. And so the perception of our schools is getting better. Oakcrest Elementary is, for example, I got people lining up right now to go with the lower grades into Oakcrest Elementary School. Strengthening our magnet and choice programs, parents will move to a strong program. As the schools get better, parents will want to take their kids there, and so they'll do it. And then the final is redistricting, but it does create other problems. We did that last year where we tried to redo it, and we created more problems than we solved on some of those because of the thing, and it's not necessarily a longer-term fix. And so, like I said, the bottom line is we are better in situation than we were last year. They are getting better, but we still have a situation where we have problems.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the barriers that Evergreen is still experiencing is that the majority of students that create the majority of the absences are being bussed in from far away. And if the kids miss the bus, the kids aren't being brought to school for a variety of reasons. We've had parents that have literally run out of gas halfway there. And they complain because they say, I'm passing two schools to get my kids to Evergreen. And it also affects school grade. We know that attendance and school grade go hand in hand.
What we have here is, is an easier look at where we are. And Ms. Robert, the students you're talking about are the students that are over here that are based on the other side of seventy-five.
Right.
These are the students that are bused to Evergreen.
Right.
Over here. We have a lot of districts, school districts, zones, that are very large. We have a lot of students that are bused along the way in Marion County, just because of our size of our district. So it's, this is not an isolated case with Evergreen that our students are bused. There are about a hundred and ninety-eight students that are living in this area. And so if I don't send them to Evergreen where they are, I've got to, we have to rezone them to somewhere. Obviously, the, what looks like common sense would be College Park Elementary School. College Park is over capacity. In order to accommodate those students into College Park, I would have to move five portables to College Park. Those portables that would move there do not have student stations attached to them. We do not get COFTI dollars for the students that attend in those schools, which are capital improvement dollars that we get per student station for students that are there. So if we put students in, and from Teresa, she's not, not here, put a student in a portable, we're, we're losing COFTI dollars on that. So our goal is to have them all in brick and mortar. But in order to do that, I got But in order to do that, I got to put them somewhere. And currently, Evergreen has a capacity of 714 student stations. Living, Evergreen.
It's not a capacity issue.
Capacity is there. Living in the zone, the students that currently live in the zone for that, we have 551 students. So if every student that lived in that zone, we'd still be under capacity at Evergreen. There are currently 329 students that are attending Evergreen. If I pull out those 198 students, that'll drop, you know, Evergreen's attendance to under 200 almost. And so, and then that creates issues, a secondary issue on that. And so, it's easy to, this is, you know, on a visual standpoint, that's an easy fix, but there's, the impact of that is huge across many things.
Although you were saying as schools improve, then parents will
Yeah, Evergreen.
Go to schools that are more highly rated. And we have just spent so much money on Evergreen over the years that it does make me wonder if it would be more cost-effective, even if we had to add portables. I'm not interested in, in overburdening any school and, and this is a tough problem. But if we're trying to maximize the chances of Evergreen's success, then we need to drill down and look at what are creating the barriers and try to solve them as best we can.
When you, when you move portables, one thing that I looked at, it would, the rough estimate, because this is not hard numbers, but when I looked at it, it'd be about $30,000 to move the five portables to College Park. And then it taxes the system. I mean, the cafeteria isn't large enough to handle it. You have plumbing and infrastructure, you know, when you put more students and more, more things there. So there's lots of, there's lots of things that you have to address and impact for that.
Right. And I remember teaching at North Marion and we had that whole portable city in front of the whole school for a very long time and somehow we managed. So I, I guess I'm just not willing to give it up in the sense that, you know, again, look at the money that we've spent, look at the, the pain that we've gone through for, for so many years with this school. Surely, if we can put a man on the moon, we can figure out a way to make this better.
And the bigger issue is, and we just keep avoiding it, we're going to have to look at zoning those kids to the right schools because we just keep kicking this can down the road and it's not getting any better.
Yeah. The issue, the issue that we have on the, you can see where the, the schools are. All our schools are, are located here and the zones radiate out.
In the north side? Are you talking north side schools?
Well, basically all our schools, especially where we have here. If we're going to redistrict our south, you know, our, our zones radiate out. And so to try to grab more kids, you put a school into a different school zone and that's what we addressed last year when we tried to redistrict.
I've got a question for you. What were you calling the, the capital dol, coffee money, capi?
COFTE.
C-O-F?
C-O, COFTE. David, what's, what's this?
Capital Outlay Full Time Enrollment. So it's the money, there's money you can
Mr. Hurley, yeah, thanks.
So COFTE, COFTE, Capital Outlay Full Time Enrollment, that's the money that the district gets for structures and improvements when there are seats associated with it versus FTE?
Okay, got it. Well, Ms. Thoreau never ceases to amaze me how much we think alike. I guess it's the horse DNA in, in our bodies. I don't know that we got, both got horse, horse lover DNA. But I am just not going to sell children by belly button numbers for COFTE money. If my children went to Madison Street, I drove them across town for years, two of them went all the way through. When they were there, except for my daughters last year, they were in the old building the entire third, fourth and fifth grade, as I requ, as I recall, maybe it was fourth and fifth grade, but anyway, were in portables for 15 years.
Right.
And to say they didn't get a good education, I'm sorry, my daughter's an engineer today. Okay, she's got a great education.
I've never said it's not a good education. I'm just worried about our dollars.
All right. My dollars, I'm concerned about the busing dollars that we're spending every single day, twice a day, sending kids many miles away, when you add that up also. I'm also thinking about, when I look at why I'm here, it's not to balance capital dollars, it's to educate students. These children, their parents are so far away from them that everyone complains, "Oh, at Evergreen, we don't get parental involvement." But it's too far for some of these moms to travel. They've got a neighbor that'll take them a, a partial way, these hundred and something children, but they can't go the full way.
And I agree with that 100%. I mean, that, but that problem is not isolated to Evergreen.
Well, but it is a big problem at Evergreen. It has been for a very long time and has not been resolved for a very long time. So if it takes five portables at College Park or three there and two at Saddlewood, however we have to work it out, that's the angle I want to go to and I don't care about coffee money. That's my position.
But we do have to look at cafeteria capacity.
It's going to be all right.
I mean, we have to, well-
Madison Street, half the school was in portables.
We just, we need to look at the whole picture and I've always been a proponent of getting those kids to the schools that are closer to where they live. But I do think we have to look at the whole capacity issue and put the strength to look and see what does it do to College Park? Are we going to have children starting lunch at 9:30 in the morning? I, I mean, we have to look at that capacity issue.
Since you interrupted me, I want to address that. Aren't our schools built at capacity? Plus the, the, I always understood the core of the school is built for an excess of up to 1, 25% more in capacity to handle that. Is that true?
I can't speak to that.
Roberts here. Roberts. When we design a school, we used to design it where the core would take up to a 25% excess capacity over the block and mortar seats and, over the student stations. So because knowing that schools would get oversized as we expanded to build new schools, is that still going on?
It depends on the year. Before 2002, when the code changed and the law changed and SREF changed, school districts did pretty much what they wanted to. And so in a tough budget year, you might design a school to fit exactly the same number of students you're going to serve and no more. So two years into its-
What about College Park?
College Park was in that same timeframe. It was built in the late 90s and so a lot of times, I wasn't here then, but looking at the past history, it really depended on the year. If it was a lot of money in the system, you built a bigger school. If it wasn't, you built a really tight school and you added portables within four years. But the state has changed the guidelines so that you have to build, for instance, if we're building a cafeteria, we're going to build one at Osceola Middle School. You can't go over a certain size cafeteria and you're only allotted two classrooms more than you have population for at the time you're building. It used to be that you build in 25% because it just simply made sense to do.
Kind of what they used to-
In the last couple of years, we've been restricted from doing. Wymina Park, we had 20 portables out there with students in them, a couple were PE and the only reason we got the wings that were built there is because we told the state, "Every school around it is that capacity or above. We can't fit anybody else in brick and mortar." You want us to get rid of portables after 20 years? It's impossible. Some of those portables are 40 years old. They're going to fall apart and we have to replace them. And we had three portables with seats there that we got rid of and said, "We have zero capacity at portables." So it pushed us over the threshold quite a bit and the state said, "Well, then you can build up to X amount of seats." And the board, as I recall, added two more classrooms and that brought us right to the threshold on what we can do and we were able to replace the portables with brick and mortar. That's how we were able to do it, but you really have to navigate more so than ever before because gone are the days where the board takes in local sales tax money and has some freedoms. Even if we're using our own dollars, we can only go so far and it's according to SREF now. So it's not, we, since I've been at, at the helm in facilities, we've always built the core facilities on a new school bigger because we know, well, it's just like 8th Street.
Is that one of the prototypes?
It's one of the prototypes. There's 12 of them.
I understood the prototypes were designed to hold 20% more students in the, the core. That's what I understood, that those prototypes did handle 20% more in their core, their core construction over students.
Uh, I'm not sure. I know that those 12 schools that we did, yeah, they were built as a copy from a design for another school district, so you kind of inherit the good with the bad. It might have some capacity here but not here if that school district did things different.
Okay. But my question to you is this. At College Park, what is another school that they're close to? Saddlewood?
Saddlewood.
It would, you would look at, the, Saddlewood's in the pack. I'm nervous about Saddlewood because of all the new
They've got, yeah. They're like-
They have a brand new facility going in there with 2,000
They're 950.
Family homes in there.
What we could do is go back at these prototype schools and we would have to measure and look at the capacity of the cafeteria and the core spaces versus what's there now. Those schools, the prototypes, were built for about 770 students. You could probably squeeze up to another 100 in the school and not drastically affect the core. So that puts you at almost 870. When class size reduction came in, it dropped us to 18, 22 or 25. All those schools dropped to about 560, 570. Yet we still had 770 kids there, so they all went to portables because of class size reduction. And then you may recall, we built 11 classroom wings between 2006 and '09 and that got us back up to about 780 student stations in capacity at 11 schools. Not all of them were the prototypes. Jones and Fort McCoy were the two that were not prototypes. But I can go back and look at what school was designed for versus what's there now and how much more the core could handle. You know, it's, it's really, as Ms. McCall spoke, it's really a matter of you wind it with more lunch periods, but it can affect media center access. It may be an issue if you add administr, maybe not administrative positions, but additional counselors or deans or what have you. And then you run out of space for offices, so then your next, your stopgap measure is to put them in a portable in an office. And then a couple of years later, everybody's tired of going the guidance way at the back of the school and we get asked what can be done? Tell you shrink the population, nothing. But I will go back and look at the-
If you tell me that, but being someone raised in the state of Florida, in portables as a kid myself, my kids were in portables. The sky did not fall. And so, but the sky is falling for children at Evergreen and their family. And this needs to be corrected, whatever it takes.
So we have 79 open seats at College Park right now. How many kids do we have in that?
115.
About 190.
Oh, that was 115.
190.
Oh, it's 115.
And so, and then, when you, when you think about that, like I said, there's 511 students in this zone now. We take out these 200, so that puts 300 students at Evergreen.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
It would be less than that. Then where are you going to pull more students to fill Evergreen?
You're going to put a magnet program at Evergreen to draw people there.
Exactly. I mean, because I've got nowhere-
That's what you're going to do? That was your idea.
I've got nowhere to grab students from.
It was a middle school, but, well, and also build, talking about like reducing capacity, closing that wing at Reddick that you mentioned, the one that was built in 1952.
They'll be closer.
I think Evergreen has a wing which is building six that's kind of off to the side. And I'm just, you know, throwing ideas out here. That would help reduce capacity then, wouldn't it?
Well-
And then I'm looking at, I'm looking at this capacity, 80, 80, 80 to 89% capacity, those schools, if you start shifting some schools on that south end, because I'm looking at Hammett-Bourne is, is over.
Yeah.
But if you start shifting some of College Park, Marion Oaks, Sun and Rise, Shady Hill, you start just making some minor shifts, you could probably accommodate these kids.
The, the problem with minor shifts, that may solve a problem today, but what does that lead to in the long-term factor? What we did, Mr. Hurley, he and Mr. Jacobs and I, last year, we basically wiped out every single zone on the computer and then rezoned students for closest to school and we ran into some severe problems because of where the schools are located within their school zones and where their populations of those students are. And so on paper, I, I, when I first sat down, I said, "This is easy." You know, we just need to shift some stuff. But once you start looking at the details and looking at the shifts, it's not as easy as, "Well, we'll just take 50 kids from Hammett and put them here," or 60 kids from there. But it's where they're located, where the schools are located, where you would have to draw the line. And a lot of times, we had to draw lines where we had a school that wasn't even located in their zone and we can't do that.
Well, we've got some space at Shady Hill and we never did really do a whole lot of crying when we were busing the Jones Neighborhood students to Shady Hill. So, so those students came out and said, "There's going to be some shifting that you've got at Shady Hill." There's never seems to be a reason, there never seems to be a problem with busing our minority students. Okay? And we didn't have a problem with busing our Jones Neighborhood students to Shady Hill. It was okay for many, many years, okay? Now we're like, "Okay, that's not good. They need to be going to neighborhood school." It's no longer okay to be busing our minority students from Airport Road, past two elementary schools or more, to Evergreen. So I need you to help us fix that problem, okay?
Keeping in mind, would we have bused those kids from the Jones area to Shady Hill if we weren't under that desegregation order? That probably came into play, but I, I understand the spirit of what you're saying.
That we'd have them under that for a very long time.
Yeah. We've been under it now for, what, about 10 years?
Yes. And we've still continued doing it.
That's the same thing with Madison as well.
Mm-hmm. So-
Because we're busing kids from the Madison Street area to other schools as well.
Right.
So, I mean, this is a huge problem and we, we just keep kicking this can down the road. We have to address it. We cannot continue to just pacify the situation. Let's figure out how, let's get it done. Let's figure out how we're going to do it. And it's going to be tough. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to tell you it's going to be easy. It's going to be tough for us as a board, it's going to be tough for the teachers, it's going to be tough, tough for the parents as well.
It's going to make some happy parents. It's going to make some happy parents if their student, if they can get to their child's school without taking commercial transit, busing service over there.
And just because we were obligated to do it illegally from a historical perspective, we're no longer under that and approaching this from a, "We're going to make this happen somehow," I think changes the narrative. We're going to make it happen somehow.
I see three board votes right now.
I was going to say, I think, Mr. Ayers.
I mean, I-
Let's just get going on it.
I'm not sure how many bottles of Pepto Bismol it's going to take.
There's nothing that you have said that I don't agree with 100%.
Right.
Nothing that you have said. The only thing that I can question is, "Well, let's just make it happen." I mean, there's, there, I want a million bucks.
Have mindset, have mindset.
Make it happen. I have the mindset, we've looked at this, you know, through no other way. So the mindset that I go back to my first present, my presentation with repurposing to reclaim, to reduce the capacity of the seats. So you take, you take, you take Shady Hill, I mean, I'm sorry, Bellevue Santos Elementary School, you move it into the other end of the district, that then takes it out of this triangle of the schools that are so close together. Then we can move, we can shift the students that go over here that are supposed to go to Marion Oaks, put them at Bellevue Santos, freeze up Marion Oaks, then I can pull kids out of Shady Hill. I, it's a domino.
You could pull Saddlewood.
Right. But I can't, I, we want to make it happen, but I can't do it with our current situation.
I think we can, you told me we could do it with five portables. If we've got 80-
We can do it with five portables and I agree with 100% with that, but then go back to what, what does that do to Evergreen? And we pull those students out of Evergreen.
What it does to, I don't care what it does to a rectangular building. I care what this is doing to children.
Okay. What about the students that are still left at Evergreen?
Well, I think that's what he means.
That's what I mean.
So ponder this and again, I preface with, this is a hypothetical and we would be remiss not to share what we brainstormed. Share the idea of the combining.
We, we had looked at, you know- Taking Oakcrest Elementary School with task capacity and then making one district for the school with Oakcrest Elementary School where you combine, so if you pulled the 200 kids out of that zone, you would put the kids, you would stock kids in portables, but then we could have-
So if, if we take those kids that, that are on the other side of 75, the 200, and we'll put them at College Park, the capacity in Evergreen goes so low, correct? About how many?
It would go, the, the kids in the zone would be around 320.
But how many are there right now?
Right now, it would probably drop it down to like 175.
Okay. There, there's capacity at Oakcrest that could handle that. So if we were to combine them and, and make that one school then with, with those two So if we were to combine them and make that one school then with those two populations, then they, we would keep the, all the supports with, in the Oakcrest facility, and then that would open up the seats at Evergreen.
Which is bigger, Oakcrest or Evergreen? Which, which, which school has the most seats, Oakcrest or Evergreen?
That I-
Without portables.
But, well, let me, I can-
Evergreen. Which school is newer?
Evergreen is a newer school.
Oakcrest is larger in capacity-wise.
By how many?
By 140.
Is that counting portables?
No, well, that, there are no portables at Evergreen.
No, at Oakcrest.
At Oakcrest, I think there are, I think there are three portables that are included into that.
So that's counting three portables at Oakcrest.
So that, that would be 42 students, 42 stations. Or move it all to Evergreen.
Yeah, that's an idea. Because if we've got three portables at Oakcrest and we're, and they're, and the sky's not falling there, I don't believe that a few portables at College Park, that's a much newer school with a much better core facility, is going to make the sky fall over there.
Yeah, and right now, you said there's only 170 that live in that community, but it's-
Three hundred and something.
Enough school, but it's been enough schools. So people in that community are choosing not to send their children to that school because of that. So really, you know, I don't even think we're giving that community a fair chance of what it could actually be had it not been enough schools.
Right, I'd be interested to know when Oakcrest was an A school, what their enrollment was.
That's the problem.
Oakcrest and Evergreen.
And Evergreen, yeah, because Evergreen was an A school too.
Because if people are moving their kids based on their school grade, we expect that Evergreen to come up. We expect that Evergreen grade to be better. So at some point, those people are going to be bringing their kids back. So we need to be prepared.
And that's, and that's always the, you know, we want to think with the long-term. You know, we can do a fix right now that will fix today, but what does that do tomorrow?
See, I don't want to, I don't want another generation of students out at I-75 to be the skyfall for their family while we're waiting to rebuild a school so we can shift to Shady Hill. No. We've been waiting for that for many, many years. Evergreen's been struggling for many years. Probably a lot to do with the fact that you don't get a lot of parental involvement because it's too far away. And today is the day to look at how we can fix that. If we've got three portables at Oakcrest and the sky's not falling and we're talking about even putting more kids over there, the sky's not going to fall at College Park either. It's a new school.
Mr. Ayers, I think there is a consensus today that we would like to look to putting, I guess, the five portables at College Park. Maybe you can come back and give us more accurate numbers at this point.
They may not be five because you have 79 seats.
Right, right. So we can get those kids from-
So if we can just look at that, that's what you're hearing from this one today, okay?
Now, I could do that. And then are you, so am I hearing you say the, looking to do that? And then go ahead and do a boundary shift or just move those kids? I mean, because if we do a boundary zoning shift, there's lots of legal aspects that are involved with all that kind of stuff. But if we just move the kids and say, "This is where you're going," that's another option.
I think that's what we need to do, right?
We'd be looking at doing this for next year.
Now, this would be for the, this wouldn't be now, it wouldn't be now.
No, 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 yeah, no.
But, but at this point, if we wanted to do a zoning shift, it would be hard pressed for us to get it done for the 2020, for the 2021 school year. It would actually be, if we did actually zoning boundary, we would be looking at the 2023 school year.
We can get those portables in there for this upcoming school year.
Now, I can't speak for facilities, but when I talked about that, we would have to confirm that the portables are there. We did some brief, I did some brief phone calls and aerial shots to make sure that there was power and infrastructure that was ability for there, whether they're K3 portables or other portables, that they have to have restrooms. So there's lots of minutia that's got to be tidied up. So when I looked at it, it was a 10th-
I have a suggestion.
You give me more credit.
I think, I don't disagree with anything that's been said, but the one missing link here, and maybe we already know what the parents are going to say, but why don't we ask those parents of those 190 kids, "Do you want to go to your closer's home?" I mean, we're making assumptions about those kids, well, you, we, you can say that.
We're the board, and it is closer for these students to be closer to their home for their parent, like, they're in town. I mean-
It's safer, they're not on a bus driving across town twice a day waiting for-
I would like to get the parent input on it.
We can talk ourselves out of anything, but-
I'm not trying to talk ourselves out of it. We talk about parent involvement, and now we're making a decision without parent involvement.
The parents have already been talking to us about the fact that, that's where we got the ideas from, is I didn't even know the parents were coming from over there until the parents called me and told me they were coming from over there. I didn't even know it. That's how I found out about it. So, so we need to move forward to fix it. And Ms. Ayers, I'm sorry, we got you completely off kilter.
No, that's, that's why I'm here.
And, and that you got to change course. You got to change course, you got to get you a new GPS. But if you'll do it for us and get, get the information back to us as quick as possible, working with Mr. Knight and the portables and that sort of thing, I think we can move forward with that plan.
And Mr. Ayers, why are you up? I talked to Mr. Hurley a little bit earlier about-
We talked.
You got it, okay, thank you. About Madison Street.
And communication is key. Obviously, we want the community to know what we've talked about today, what our intentions are and why, and the information that we've gathered over many years. You know, I'm just one year on the board, but I've been knowing about this for many, many years. And we want always for families to have a voice. But we don't want that to prevent us from doing what we know is right.
Got you, and I'll do that. And I just, when I present something, I just want to give you everything.
Right.
So that you know what the long-term plan is. Because, you know, I, I don't want to go for an easy fix. It's the feel-good fix right now that will lead to bigger, more problems. And then we'll say, "Well, we'll just address them later." Well, we'll always have to address them later. I just want to make sure that if we do something, we do it for the right reasons. And it's a, a true fix, not just a surface fix.
And I'm thinking if we do what, some of this, what we're talking about, and then we start making those shifts to the south, we're going to get that justification to get that, another school in the south end of the county. Because we need another school. We know that. We know that because that's where the growth is with the area by Four Ranch and Saddlewood. We know there's going to be a huge coming. But we also know the coming on the, on the west side of Ocala, where the Pine Oaks Golf Course is, they're about to put a bunch of units in there. So there's going to be another need. So we can't just, that group will probably end up going to Evergreen.
Right, and the issue that we have with the north and our south is its population shifts. You know, for the last five years, our, we've been steady. You know, I have, I love having conversations with Mr. Hurley because he gets into birth rate and death rate and percentage rate and all this, and I get lost sometimes, but then I come back around. But what he does, he looks at births and then those students that enter school, and we have, we could go to private school and so forth. But we've stayed the same. So it's not like we're increasing the number of students in our district. The population shifts are shifting, and that's what create our problem. And that problem's not going to get any better. And so, yes, I will give you and look at this information for that. But I seriously consider to go back, when you have time, to look back, especially at Bell V. Santos, because that's a school that instead of, before we decide to pump millions and millions and millions of dollars, we look at relocating that facility within the zone. That will then loosen us up in the south to be able to do some of the shifting where I can take some kids here, move some zoning around there. But understand, I don't know that anybody's been on the board when we've done zoning changes. They're not nice, they're not easy, you're not, it's hard, and so just be prepared.
So what do you need to move forward with the reason, with rebuilding that school, replacing, a school replacement? What do you need us to do?
For Bell V. Santos?
That is-
Before you jump on that, let me give you a word of caution. Know the history of that.
Oh, I 100%, I 100% know the history.
Know that history.
I 100% know the history of that.
Because you will get-
You know, you want to come back with us with that answer?
Yeah, come back with us, talk to us about the Santos.
So I've got, so I've got two, 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 two challenges now.
That's right, that's right. We have you stuttering, I'm sorry.
That I do, that I do well, I do openly, is the five portables to College Park. To see what it would take to get the five portables to College Park, see if that's feasible. Come with some concrete numbers of what that would take. And then look at the actual numbers of the kids. And I also want to give you what that would pull out of Evergreen, so you know what that, those Evergreen numbers are for that. And then explore the Bell V. Santos.
Okay, all we're asking you to do is help us heal history.
And, and, sure, I can do that.
You're going to go down the history books.
No, I'm part, I have a great team that does it, and I'm the-
And it is a feel-good fix because finally the community will feel heard.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Any comment?
Do you have any?
I know, I'm good.
Is there any public comment?
Thank you.
All right, seeing none. Oh, yes, there is. Ms. Novella, are you, you have public?
Yes, she's waving the-
I wasn't sure if she was- I don't know, she just had enough and was like-
She filled out later.
Good morning. I didn't, did not come prepared to speak, but after listening to-
Can you please, um, give your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Nadella Haines, Post Office Box 363, Ocala, Florida. I didn't come prepared to speak, I came to, but after listening to your discussions a while ago, talking about the changes and rezoning, I agree with all, everything each and every one of you said. But I must go back to Ms. McCall. I think there should be a survey going out, letting the parents know ahead of time. That's why we have so much disrespect and there is so much pain now with, behind the system is because what has happened before, when the parents had no input, no say-so, and this is what's going to be dumped on us. So I like what I'm hearing. It seemed like it's going to be a fix, but please give the parents an ample opportunity to know what's going on and to have some input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good advice.
That's what we needed.
And could that be done in the form of a community meeting or something with those Evergreen parents? And multiple forms, but it needs to probably be done, taken to them, to that area, because we were just had a community meeting Monday and it was not attended well, so we need to make sure.
They live too far away to get there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We may need to take it to them instead of expecting them to come to that.
And when we have some real and specific plan, you know.
Right, thank you, Ms. Novella.
Is there any more public comment? Seeing none. Great, now we will be discussing the National Board Certification update with Ms. Sheena.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Superintendent. It's with great pleasure to provide you with an update regarding National Board Certification. Last year, Dr. Mayer and Reverend Cummings expressed a desire to provide funding for teachers that may be interested in becoming National Board Certified. As a result, I included this in our Title II grant requesting that we reimburse classroom teachers that successfully pass each component towards National Board Certification in order to retain highly qualified teachers, and that grant was approved. So we are excited about that, and now we're moving forward. In order for a teacher to be eligible, they need to, of course, have a bachelor's degree, have three years of teaching experience, and a valid Florida license. Teachers that are interested, they have until February 28, 2020, to register and pay a non-refundable $75 fee. There are a total of four components, and each component is $475. So if they pass it and they submit their score report to us, we will reimburse them for each component. Along the way, absolutely. So when they sign up, if I am a teacher and I register, I select what I want to be certified in, and then I pick which component. You don't have to do it in any specific order. I can select two components, I can select three components, I can select one component, but you have to pay at that time. And then once they take it during their testing window, then they, they provide the score report to us, and then we reimburse them. They have three years, and they have to attempt all four components within three years. We do have a teacher that says she finished it in two years. So it's just about what you want to do, because you can do two components a year, and you can pass it in two years. But then they give you two additional years if you didn't pass it, two additional years to retake the component you didn't pass. If a teacher doesn't pass, they can retake it, but we will only reimburse for what they pass, absolutely. We also are offering two information sessions to teachers, November the 11th at 4:00 and November 14th at 4:30. We will also offer additional information sessions, December and January, for teachers who are interested. We have six teachers that have signed up so far for one of the sessions and three for the other. When we sent out the communication in the Teacher Monday memo, we had a teacher respond, and she said, "Actually, I signed up over the summer, so this is exciting for me." We have other teachers that are coming to ask about, you know, just want to know what does the reimbursement look like. I spoke with Ms. Boston Ellis yesterday, and she said teachers are provided a $1,500 supplement that keep up with their certification. So we do have teachers that purchase that. So you will receive up to $1,900 reimbursement if you take all four components and pass. And then if you submit your stuff in a timely fashion, then you receive a $1,500 supplement from the district. According to National Board, we have 131 teachers from Marion County that were board certified. And of that 131, we still have 52 of them that are active employees in some capacity here.
Do we, you have a list of those 52?
I do.
Can you send it to us?
Sure.
I'd like to know where they are.
Sure, and it's on their website.
They're still active.
52 of them. 130, some of them have retired, because the list goes all the way back. Some have retired, some have moved on. But of the 131, we pulled, and it was 52, some are assistant principals now.
Oh.
Yes, they're all serving in different capacities, some are still teachers.
I would like to know, like you said, where they're at.
Yeah.
Where the pocket of them.
Sure. Do you have any-
And see, and I ask that because if they were board, are our board certified, National Board certified, and they have moved up or moved on, that lets someone know why they should be in this program.
And we actually spoke with the teacher, that we're asking her if she's available to come and speak with the teachers or if we can record her, because she said that she did it and she noticed that it did improve her teaching practice.
Oh.
So those, it's good to hear from your colleagues, people who have gone through it, so yes, we-
Then we have Ms. Brookins, who's over this, who did it. And she's way up there now, and she's from Marion County.
Yes, and we have, you know, and then now if they, National Board is going to change their policy for 2021. So anyone who registers now, the certification will be valid for 10 years. But if they wait to do it next year, they will have to renew every five years. So that is something also we will share with the teachers as a motivation.
To do it now.
Yes, to do it now.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
That is really great news.
It sure is.
I'm looking forward to seeing the flyer. I'll, I'll attend the one on 11th.
Perfect. I have, I can give you the flyer now.
Yes, thank you.
That's fabulous.
All right, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Okay, and now we will move to board concerns. Ms. McCall will begin with you.
Well, I just have to say, I was incredibly disappointed to read the paper this morning and see that this investigative report made it to the newspaper before we even have a chance as a group to get together. And I think it's unprofessional. I was hoping names would be redacted and not put into the newspaper. I'm just, I am more than disappointed in that, and I think it puts us in a very bad light. And that's all I'm going to say.
Ms. Stacy?
Well, I don't even really, um, know what to say. Except I'll say that my heart's heavy for a lot of people to include the superintendent, to include everybody in our district. But we need to get some normal, normalcy back to our district. And today, there are some things that the board can do. This week, an employee that, I don't know, I've never even seen her before. And she ran into me and grabbed me and said, she was in tears. She begged me to help the employees. Begged me to help them. And they're on eggshells, and it's just, every day's hard. And I believe it's kind of our fault that we haven't resolved some things. I got into my car, and I tearfully asked God for guidance. So here I go. Today, there are things this board can do, and I'm asking for three things as a starter. I do have other ideas to share down the road. I met with Mr. Gibbs yesterday and ran everything past him that I'm about to say to you. I didn't even know the article was coming out, this was even before that, so even now, more so, it needs to be dealt with. Statutes and administrative rule never envisioned our unique situation we find ourselves in here in Marion County. Things here are totally unprecedented. However, we are the elected legislative body for this school district. And when statutes don't cover unique situations, we must make political decisions as this district's legislative body. Therefore, we need to take control, stabilize our district now, so we can get back to the business of education. business of education. Somehow, when things end up in the hands of attorneys, and you've got attorneys coming in here talking and everything, it just completely causes, and things like that just kind of happen. They just kind of, just roll like a, down a hill, and it just keeps kind of building. And the first of my three requests of you today is to please have Mr. Gibbs direct Mr. Pharoah to send all correspondence to him, not us. Why? Because it is a common legal strategy that attorneys use, which is to send out manipulative legal jargon containing threats and comments to confuse laypeople like us. And smart lawyers do that. That's what they do. So then, we pick up the phone, one by one. We call Mr. Gibbs for explanation, which he tells us five times. And then we have contracts laying there that the district needs to move. We have employees waiting for contracts for different things that's happening in the district that can't get reviewed because our board attorneys wasting time on us with this stuff. Where if it all went to him in the first place, he could, um, so I'm asking the Board for consensus that we direct Mr. Gibbs to send Mr. Pharoah a letter informing him that future emails should go to Mr. Gibbs, so he can digest it, and then give his recommendations on what or if a response from us is even necessary. If the attorney copies the board anyway, I would just forward my email unopened to Mr. Gibbs, because I don't even know what I'm reading. It's too confusing. My second request, I have three. One thing that's really weighting down our employees in this district right now, and every single employee that comes to me says, "We just need clarification. We don't know what to do." What is this Pharoah's role in our daily routine? They are sadly and unfairly stuck in the middle, and we are their employer, so it is our responsibility to fix that. I would like this Board to consider asking Mr. Gibbs to send every employee an email, informing them that Mr. Pharoah is not contracted by this district any longer, and that during the workday, they are not to speak with him about school board business. If they so desire to have conversations through their own free will, that can happen outside our work hours. But this being called to offices and stuff without legal representation, it's out of control. It's putting our employees into a ridiculous situation. There are allegations that the superintendent is demanding the employees respond to his call and interrogations. I don't know if these allegations are true. I'm not here to say whether they're true or not. All I know is what people allege. And to force our employees to go and speak to someone who is not contracted by this district is no different than the superintendent requiring that they speak to her neighbor if he comes in here. His, her neighbor's not contracted here, and Mr. Pharoah's not contracted here either. My third request, these allegations, they come, and whether they're true or not, I've heard them for, I've heard them for three years, and, but one thing's for sure. The employees don't really know what to do with them, and I'm hoping that this second, this third request I have, that if people do feel harassed by a district administrator, any district-level administrator, that if they send their complaint to HR, that they just simply CC it to Mr. Gibbs, so that he can handle this information in the way he deems appropriate. And at some point, the school board will decide what we want to do, because we really haven't discussed what's appropriate and what we want to do with information that comes to us. So that's something that we haven't had the meeting yet, but, but, so I will just say, he will handle it appropriately. As the legislative body, I ask for consensus to please give our employees clarity today, to immediately give them relief from the elephant on their back, and we can do this by using our legislative power to stop allowing them to be scapegoats of an unprecedented situation. So I'd like your, your comments.
Any comments?
I would agree that I am sick and tired of getting last-minute emails from an attorney right before a meeting. I'm sick and tired of this whole thing, and this school board member is going to continue to do whatever is within our power to provide as much stability and reassurance as possible to our employees until all of this is over. And over to me means the sooner the better. It appears that it's just going to be scorched earth from here on in. That's no way to run a district. Anyone that uses those kind of tactics truly cannot have the best interest of children in mind. And with seven EEOC complaints, one discrimination suit, one independent investigation regarding hostile work environment, another independent investigation regarding hostile work environment, it is no wonder that this district is having difficulty doing what we were elected to do, what we have been hired to do. It's like we're having to run offense and defense at the same time. And what's really sad for me is that I have no confidence that until something changes drastically, that it's going to get any better. So anything that can be done to keep things as stable as possible while we get through this process, I am 100% in support of. That's all I have to say.
What last-minute email did you get?
Okay, we're not going to, no, we're not going there. Mr. Cummings, do you have any comment?
Well, I-
In regard to Ms. Stacy?
To Ms. Stacy. To Ms. Stacy.
I agree with Ms. Thrower that I'm just ready for some normalcy, and I don't think it's going to get any better until something changes drastically.
Well, my response about that is, I've asked for three things. They're not big. They're not, we're dealing with, statutes weren't even written to even imagine what's happening here. So there's no statute to cover the situation we're in. I want three things. I want Mr. Gibbs, I want us to direct Mr. Gibbs to send a letter to Mr. Pharoah, directing him to send his correspondence back and forth to him, and he will decipher it and send it to us. And I will not be reading anything else from Mr. Pharoah. We'll be forwarding everything to, to Mr. Gibbs. If Mr. Gibbs does not feel there's anything significant in it, and it's just a bunch of jargon, we will never even know the email came. I don't, I don't even care. That's the way he handles other things from parents and stuff that's happening. I want him to handle it just like that. The other thing I want, our employ, I had an employee come to me crying this week that I don't even know. She's not of the upper-level executive ring. She's an average employee in this district, begging me to do something. They never know when they're going to get a call, that they have to go talk to Mr. Pharoah. So we send an email to our employees that he is not employed here. They are not to, to be discussing school board concerns, policies, whatever, with him during the workday. If they want to speak with him by their own free will in the evenings, that's just fine, but not during our workday. And number three, just, they know that this school board gets a copy of any kind of complaint or anything that goes to HR, we are CC'd everything. Now, how do I think that will help? I think that will just ease the pressure tremendously. They won't be waiting for that call from Pharoah. They, they won't, they won't care if the call comes from Pharoah. And honestly, I think it'll just help us all have a better relationship with our superintendent, because we will start working together instead of through, through lawyers and that sort of thing. And, because I really would like, you know, maybe we could even, at, at some point soon, sit and just have a talk with Dr. Mayor and her concerns with us, and, and how we could work better together. I don't know. Or maybe I'll look at her face, and she doesn't look like she wants any part of that. That's okay. So, so I, I take that back, but, but I really would like to-
And that again is another fabrication, Mrs. Stacy.
Well, you were-
Another one.
Well, your expression-
To add to the very long list of fabrications that not only you're bringing up today, but you continually bring up, to continue to create this, this Dan Brown novel that you think we're living in.
I don't even know who Dan Brown is.
I'm not surprised.
I'm talking to the school board members, so how do y'all feel?
So, I, this is my thoughts. We are a board that stands behind our employees. And Ms. Stacy, I think you brought some excellent ideas to this board today, because as a board, we do have policy against bullying and harassment, and our employees have been bullied and harassed by the superintendent and Mr. Pharoah. And I think that those are excellent ideas, especially, Mr. Pharoah does not have a contract with this school board, and our employees are not subject to that harassment anymore. So I agree. I, I believe, Mr. Cummings, you agree?
Indeed.
Okay. Ms. Thrower? Are you, you do? And Ms. McCall? Okay. So there is a unanimous consensus on this board, Ms. Stacy, that Mr. Gibbs will send an email to all our employees stating that Mr. Pharoah does not have a contract. We can do this legally, Mr. Gibbs, before we start.
All you're stating is, you know, he doesn't have a contract.
He does not, okay.
And the superintendent only has authority up to $35,000.
Okay. And if they are harassed, they are to CC you in that.
On any complaint.
On any complaints that you receive. Also, if you will also send Mr. Pharoah that letter that Ms. Stacy had mentioned, and there was a third one. What was your third?
That, the, number one, the letter to Mr. Pharoah. Number two, the email to the district employees instructing them that during our school day, we will be doing school business, and if, and they will not be interrogated by people who are not on contract with us, and that, and they will, but we're not taking away their free will to speak with whoever they want to speak to in after-school hours. And the third thing is that, that Mr. Gibbs is open to receiving a CC of any complaint that's made to HR. We're not, we're not going around anybody's wheelhouse. Complaints go to HR, and everything that's, that's concerning this will be CC'd to Mr. Gibbs, and he will handle it appropriately. And when we decide what appropriately means, he'll explain to us what appropriate, when we have a meeting, what we're going, how we are going to handle everything.
And I continue to be concerned that the, that the true work of this district is being bogged down by, again, seven EEOC complaints, one discrimination suit, and two independent investigations regarding hostile work environment. These are only the ones that I'm aware of at this very moment in time. And we need to make sure that we continue to be able to run the district and handle all of the district business timely. And what I am hearing is that there's, that we are getting bogged down, and if it's a matter of providing the legal department with extra resources, short-term, so that we can keep these contracts moving and keep the business of the district going, that's going to be reassuring to our employees that regardless of this, I don't even know what to call it anymore, gigantic mess.
Which, hon?
That the business of the district will continue as uninterrupted as possible until we're at the end of this, which, again, I reiterate, the sooner the better.
So do we have consensus?
There is a consensus. Yes. Yep, there's a consensus.
And, and I'm like, every, what I heard, when I heard Beth say what she said, I was dismayed last night to get a text from a Marion County School Board employee to say, "We just can't get a break. We do not know what to do," because they had already saw the Ocala.com articles and felt as if they had been kicked in the stomach, because they don't see an end to this, whatever it is that's going on, and the, and the business of the district isn't getting done. The kids are the ones that's being slaughtered because of political wrangling.
Well, you don't get 100% of your employees if your employees are, are sad, unhappy, and fearful of their job. Their job, they, so many of our employees that have spoken to me are paycheck to paycheck. And it's almost like a quid pro quo, where if you don't do it, I say you're going to get fired. This is the, so they are one paycheck away from not being able to make their house payment. And this, this feeling is just out of control. We're, we're not going to, no more, you do what I say, or you get fired. Those days are, are just bad.
And out of respect, and out of respect to Dr. Mayor, we did not have a meeting yesterday to give their opportunity to respond, to release this to the community, to the public, to garner some type of sympathetic side. It wasn't out there. That was completely wrong. That was, that was, we were told it was confidential, keep it amongst ourselves. We hadn't talked to each other. We hadn't sent it out anywhere.
Sat on it for a week.
Been sitting on it. And out of, out of respect for the superintendent's position, we did not say anything. We, we canceled the meeting.
Why did you cancel it the night before the meeting, though? After it was scheduled?
Based on, based on Mr. Pharoah reaching out to us. We canceled it.
So is that the last-minute email you're talking about?
That was a respect thing. That had nothing to do with anything other than respect.
He responded in three days to, to an investigation that took over two months that you popped on us on the 31st, then scheduled this emergency meeting. So please do not try to say that it was canceled out of respect for me, when it was canceled 20 minutes after Mr. Pharoah sent it to the governor. So please don't say it was done for my benefit.
There needs to be-
Let me speak on the chair for a second. Okay, there needs to be clarification, Ms. Mayor. Because you're saying you got it three days beforehand, which you received it on October 30th. You received it Wednesday, October 30th. It's in his, what he has-
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So you stated that it's three days, and I'm not here to nitpick with you, and the meeting was canceled because it, we, we did need, you did need some time to respond to it.
But then why did you even schedule it to begin with?
That's to-
We had to move forward with something.
We had to move forward with something, and initially is, because when you read that, you realize that our employees have been harassed, our employees have been bullied by you, Dr. Mayor, and you are the leader of this community. So it was natural to want to plan a meeting and schedule a meeting to protect our employees. But we also realize that there's protocol, and we're going to do what's right, and we're dotting our i's and-
But when did you realize it? 20 minutes after it got sent to the governor?
It doesn't matter.
It does matter.
The governor, I didn't even know the governor got it.
He got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So the bottom line is here.
You didn't know the governor got it.
Okay. So here, here we go. The report is still open. It has not been closed, because it has not been discussed by this board. So it is-
Oh, it's not closed. Trust me.
Right. It is still-
It's not.
So we are in the future. But what we are going to do is, Dr. Mayor, I'm going to ask that you will please respond by November 14th. That would give you your two weeks to respond appropriately, however you wish. Then after that, we need to allow Linda Edwards ample opportunity time to, to respond back to that issue. This board, we do not need to be fighting and falling into this slope of arguing and behaving like the superintendent, no more.
Oh, you've done it. You do it all the time.
Our community is watching you. Our children is watching you.
Yes, they are.
Our employees are watching you.
Yes, they are.
And, Dr. Mayor, I'm going to give you the respect that our employees need, and I am not going to call you names. I am not going to yell at you, and I'm not going to talk to you the way that you do these others. So with that being said, I do have one thing I have to give this board.
Let me finish. I never finished.
He hasn't had it.
Is it, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just finished.
Go ahead.
Because, listen, and I want to say this to every employee of our district, every parent, for employees right now, you have a right to come to work, to be treated with respect, to be not talked down to, to not have profanity-laden conversations with anybody. That is a right that you have. That is a right that you have. And if you, if you're, if you feel that your rights are violated, you have a right, there are other rights that you have. And I would encourage any employee that has felt that way to let it be known. Don't sit on it. Don't sit on it. And then, as parents, parents of, of kids in this district, we have a right to send our kids to school and not be put in situations where they are the ones that are catching the short of the stick. And every kid in Marion County right now is catching the short of the stick because of what's going on with this situation. So I'm praying, I pray for Dr. Mayor, I pray for every board member up here every day. Mr. Pharoah, I'm praying that at some point, we all will be able to get together and do what's best for the students and the employees of Marion County. It's not about us. All of us are elected. All of us are elected. And just like we were elected, we can be taken out. So we need to do what's best for the students. Not, it ain't about these personalities, because that's a bunch of BS. Really, that's a bunch of BS. We're supposed to be dealing with educating these kids and nothing more. So I'm through.
Well, I have one thing I need to...
No, I'd like to speak before, before you close.
Excuse me, sir, this is board comments and there's no...
I'm, I'm...
You're not in discussion right now. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand my board members...
You can choose, you can choose to shut out the truth, and that's fine.
Please take that and pass it.
But you are ignoring the fact that the children of Marion County are best served with Dr. Mayor.
That and pass it.
Mr. Pharoah, please, let's give it a respect.
No, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir. You know, something...
We're going to let you talk, sir, but please give us this opportunity. I promise you, as the vice chair, you will get the opportunity to talk. So just please, just, just...
Today.
Today.
Okay.
Today.
Okay, so what I just handed out to you guys was the operational manual committee. And this is for the hurricane shelter, so we do not have another incident like we did this past year. If you guys wanted to just take this home and look at it and... Tell me what you think. And it's kind of, what I liked about this is, um, during the non-hurricane season, we will be meeting like every three months, like January, excuse me, February, March, April, and May. Then during the hurricane, that's when they meet like quarterly, you know, with whoever's... So, so I appreciate...
Eliminate a lot of...
Right, and there's the communication factor and stuff like that. So I just wanted to make sure that I passed...
You've done a very good job with this operations stuff, Ms...
Thank you. Okay, so, um, Mr. Cummings, I know that you did tell Mr. Pharoah that he would have an opportunity to speak. Um, I do not think in the light of things that it is probably in the best interest of the board or our community, our, our, our employees and students to carry this conversation at this point any farther. So I am going to go ahead and discuss it.
Just, just like everything, I, I understand that you want to shut down...
Do I have a motion? Do I have a...
I have a motion to close.
The truth, and that's, that's a shame, Ms. King, because the truth is something that is, is obviously bothersome to you.
Give them five minutes?
Put them on the clock.
Okay.
You'll hear me now or you'll hear me through the paper, one or the other.
Five minutes, please.
The fact...
That's fine. Hold on, Mr. Pharoah, hold on. We're going to, hold on, hold on, Kelly. We're going to give you five minutes. We're going to give you five minutes to say what you need to say. Please, sir.
This entire investigation is a political witch hunt. You've all learned the lessons of Washington DC and they're being inflicted upon Marion County. It isn't by the Democrats or it isn't by the deep state. It's by a group of people that just don't want to allow one individual who was elected to do her job, to do her job. The fact of the matter is that there have been investigations of employees like there is at any other time. In fact, one individual lied to the, to the school board to get his job. That's not right. It's not permissible. Another individual, a person who was a predator, a sexual predator of a student, was teaching in the school system and nobody seemed too interested in doing anything about that. And I, I pursued that and I will continue to pursue that. The fact of the matter is that due process, equal protection matters. It may not matter to you, but in those big, thick books that I was suggested that I need to read, they, they are contained right there. You are denying Dr. Mayor that due process. I responded to the allegations and the inspection that, investigation that was done by Ms. Edwards. I did it timely with respect to your request to have a hearing on Wednesday morning at 9:00. I delivered it to you. I delivered a copy to the governor and to his counsel. You all, 30 minutes later, decided you're going to continue this because you obviously realize that you're acting out of, out of jurisdiction because you've got no jurisdiction to do anything with respect to Dr. Meyer. And you are subject to civil damages as a result of some of the actions that are being taken. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all need to really take a deep breath. You want to make sure that you work for everybody? Sit down, have a conversation amongst yourselves here or whenever. Huh?
We can't do that. That's a violation of sunshine.
No, sir. You can do an op, you can have an open conversation right now. But that's, that's if you want, if you really want to get to the bottom of what's going on. The reality of it is that this lady's going to be the superintendent of schools until November of 2020. You tried to get the Attorney General to knock her out, that didn't work. You got Ms. Stacy to, to, to put out a newspaper article calling out the fact that she's got Asperger's. You have done everything within your power. Ma'am. Then you don't know how to read, Ms. Stacy. And I suggest that maybe you go back to a, a reading class so that you learn how to read.
Hold on, you're attacking now.
No, I mean, she's, she's telling me, she's calling me a liar. She's calling me a liar.
Pharoah, continue.
Okay. So the bottom line is that you all are doing things the way you want to do it. And you're going to continue doing the way you want to do it. But eventually, there comes a time when someone's going to put a stop to that. And I suggest to you, it's going to happen pretty soon. Thank you very much. Oh, and by the way, you don't get to terminate my contract with Dr. Mayor as a superintendent of the schools. You don't have that right. All you have the right to, thank you, Ms. Stacy, for walking out in the middle of my comments. Folks, you are really stepping into a, a bucket that you need not step into. I tried at the very beginning to try to work with you. It's obvious that that doesn't, doesn't sound true to anybody here. But the reality of it is that you're stepping into a big bucket of, of manure and you're going to get a lot of dirty feet. Thank you very much. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. All right. Again, I am going to reiterate that the board does not support the behavior that has been listed. And I want to remind our superintendent that our board does have policy against bullying and harassing our students. And with that, our meeting is...
Is the board held to that policy as well?
Our be, meeting is adjourned.